All right, we'll call our workshop to order and we will start with the department update from Senior Services Director Sharon Carter.
So I wanted to talk about specifically some personnel matters. The first one is wanted to discuss the ability to make a classification change for my administrative assistant position at the board's office. So you've been in that position for over a year and have been able to achieve, have the skills.
I'm sorry, the skills and abilities to step in to take on some additional roles to actually provide more support to me and specifically in an area that takes more skills, which is kind of filling in and doing coverage like with my bookkeeper in the event that she's actually taking vacation or is out ill during payroll times, AP times, some of those critical times that basically I have had to take over and do. And quite frankly, I don't have the capacity to continue to carry that. And so I feel like, and so I wouldn't be changing both positions because we do have a clerical admin at one at each office. I I'm strictly looking at the Goldendale one because that's where a lot of those particular tasks and items are are taking place. Also doing some undertaking of getting some of our documents in the on-base system too, in terms of our backup grants and records and that, even though we've have the more recent years scanned and that, because we've been doing the state audits and that. We need to get more of our older items so that we can clear out some space and also be able to access those readily, because we do have to preserve a lot of documents for our different grant requirements. And so doing a key piece with that, so I want to be able to look at upping that classification, the clerical admin to meets that more appropriately. And then would start training her to be able to take on some more of those functions. The next two relate to wages. And so I know that I, the board is looking at a 4% COLA again, but where we've are have been falling behind and have been for some time is with our transportation drivers' wages. We used to actually run higher than some of the other surrounding counties in terms of wages and benefits. And now we have really fallen behind. It's something I've talked about in the past that I expressed, you know, some frustration with even with when we were bringing in student interns, high school interns that were getting hired in and paying very close to what we were expecting people to do that, quite frankly, have to have a lot of skills. And there it's a very safety sensitive position, you know, if you look at kind of historically, the record of our drivers and incidents for the amount of miles and time that's spent on the road with our transportation service employees, you know, even with incidents with deer and and those have, it's been very rare that we've had those instances. We've actually often I have to respond to some of our federal transit database reporting because they're surprised we don't have, our incidents are so low, if nonexistent, related to especially injury accidents and incidents which are reporting. So oftentimes they come back and say, oh, we think you missed filled this out because you have nothing. And it's like, no, that is accurate. And so I feel like we're falling farther and farther behind. And I'm seeing challenges with, we have a posting for, you know, we need some casual drivers in White Salmon. And we've had some good applicants come through, but when the wage comes up, they're like, no, I can get more money. It's so working somewhere else that has less requirements. And so if you look, I do have, this was just comparison of Skamania, Cat and Hood River and Lincoln, the Dows, and they're all comparable size agencies to ours in terms of the service and that that's being provided and employees. Our transportation driver starts at 1681 an hour. Minimum wage is 1574 an hour, goes up to 1628 starting in January. And and these are all non-CDL driver positions. Our positions continue to be non-CDL at this time, and so these are comparing also non-CDL wages. So Skamania is 1788 an hour, Cat in Hood Rivers 1953, and Link in the Dow starts at 1911 an hour. Additionally, our transportation coordinator dispatcher positions, which we have one out of each office, and they are the ones that, you know, coordinate the schedules, coordinate the drivers, do constant ever-changing pieces with those. They are also lapsing significantly behind in the positions. Again, ours is 1782 hours, Skamania County says 21, 23 an hour, Cat 24, and Link 1949 an hour. So I had hoped that when they did the kind of human resource review, the wage study and that, that that might come out, that again, we're in this really low bracket here. But those positions, there was an information that was called out specifically to that. I do know there was a decision to make some changes in some positions in the county, but I don't even know what the survey or evaluation determined at that time. But where I'm concerned even more is that we have in our full-time and part-time permanent positions that we have, those are staff that are going to be retiring in the next year and and two, because they've already have been discussing that. So we are going to have, I would say, we, I will have a substantial difficulty in hiring and filling those positions. And these are very critical services to not only seniors, but the general public to and a substantial portion. And I feel like, again, there's a real problem with where our wages fall for those specific positions.
Thank you.
Now let us look at your information and get it around and see what we can do.
Yeah, I'm curious. I don't believe that any of this was in the salary survey. I want to remember.
Yeah, well, and and you know, historically, kind of senior services is that odd department. It seems like that we don't, but we are providing a service that is actually, you know, the transportation piece within that is a substantial piece within a number of of county agencies as well as other public agencies. And and again, it it's just more so that we used to be kind of on the higher end and it's we're substantially dropping below, even in counties that don't necessarily have a lot of same resources even that Clickitak County has. And so, you know, I'm fortunate that I have drivers, you know, and people that have been willing to. And I think a lot of that has to do with just even, you know, people mo in my department are, we're looking to serve and have big hearts, but there is also a limit to that. They've got to make a living. And in order to be able to also attract younger folks that clearly may need daycare, childcare, other thing. I mean, there's no way at this wage that's going to be feasible. But again, I'm really concerned that we're, I've got people coming up on retirement and I can't even get some of the casual positions filled. And it's not the benefit piece that's the concern because that's comparable across, it's the wages that's an issue. And I think it's more glaring when you look to what minimum wage is and what we're paying.
How do we compare to Skamania for, just as an example, for their outreach on where the buses go and how much service they're providing? How does their program?
So it's, you know, in terms of miles and trips and that for the dial-a-ride service, that's that's pretty comparable. Obviously, we've got longer distances to travel because with Skamania, the bulk of where they're taking people are Portland, Vancouver. They don't, whereas the way Clickitak County is situated, you know, the eastern part, we're going Yakima Tri-Cities for the specialists. Well, as well as specialists to Portland and Vancouver even from Goldendale and the VA. So we've got a lot more distance that we're having to travel. So there is a pretty large, our our service areas is very large. And I would say we definitely outpace, you know, Link and Cat for that service. They're much more limited. Theirs is more focused on public fixed routes. But in terms of the number of drivers and that too, it's comparable. And then they also, both Skamania, Cat and Hood River and Link in the Dows, they do have CDL driver positions too, because they are operating on their fixed route buses that are larger than the 15 passengers, which we've kept ours at the 15 passenger in order to be able to have non-CDL drivers and fill those positions. But, you know, potentially over time, there could be a need to expand that. But right now, we've.
How often are 15 passengers full?
And that's why we haven't expanded, because we've rarely had that they're full. And it's again, just the fixed route shuttles. But and we use most of the dial-a-ride, we try to use minivans, but we have passengers that have to have, because of the type of wheelchair they're in or type of chair, they have to go in an actual bus that can accommodate them. So we do, the drivers have to be able to drive ADA minivans and the smaller cutaway buses. And then all of them have to be able to secure, you know, passengers in. It's it's if you've ever seen securing an actual wheelchair in system in a bus, it's 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 quite physical actually to climb around and 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 make that happen so that that folks are safe. And it's, it can be quite a bit of work, so. And the drivers are all trained and able where they're actually provide door-through-door assistance to folks. So in, out of their home, into the vehicle, secured in the vehicle, into the doctor's office and out. And they and and interact with a lot of variety of needs. You know, we're taking people, the the focus is, you know, essential medical type items. So you have people that have varying challenges. And so the drivers can sometimes deal with, you know, folks that are are fairly difficult, both physically and mentally. And so they've got to be able to to manage that piece as well as provide a safe trip.
No, we're thankful for them for sure. So we will work on it.
Okay, so I can revisit.
I had a couple of questions. Currently, are our dial-a-ride and fixed transportation, is their wages paid out of grant funding or is it paid by county taxpayer funding?
Yeah, no, there's no county, I mean, there's taxes in that people pay taxes, those go towards those grants that we apply for. If we didn't apply for the grants and provide the service, then we're just giving the money to other areas.
Right, but no local match other than for the buses that we paid.
There is match that comes from the county and other grants. So in terms of solid waste revenues, the cash that is decided each budget year or to to provide to support that provides support for all of our different programs. So that does provide support for both fixed route and dial-a-ride. Although primarily the fixed route is where that's supplementing, because the dial-a-ride, we use, we're able to use matches, match grants from an income from our Medicaid contracted income, our Older Americans Act Senior Transportation Funding and Older Max Senior Turn and Medicaid. And then our actually volunteer hours and 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 driving support. Those provide match to the Washington State Department Transportation Grant.
I know when we, when we get into this and have discussion, the question's going to come, where are we going to get the money?
Right.
So that was why I'm trying to get the answer of this question. So we have a little more knowledge when we go into discussion and debate. Would, would if we did a salary study for these positions and found that they were off and found that we needed to adjust them, would this be asking for an increase in solid waste fees? Or do you think this would be able to be covered by grants?
So it, some of it, it would likely require some request for solid waste in terms of the match, because like the dial-a-ride is like a 50/50 match. But that 50 isn't, that other 50 is on all county money, is that is those other grants. And those are on a cost reimbursement basis. So depending on if there is more, you know, it's a cost reimbursement with a limit. So like the Older Americans Act funding, we get our allocation of that where they say, okay, we're giving you this much that you can tap and we bill based on our costs, but until that runs out, that pot. And so depending on on use and the supports from the other grants, if we have higher revenue from like our Medicaid contract, right, more of those rides, that can provide more match. So it it's a, it's not a real clear cut, and okay, you're exactly this. So there likely would need to be potentially some support from the county, but whether that's even some of what we have in fund balance or additional solid waste revenues. I'd have to run the numbers when we determined what that was. And then there's the ability potentially with our grants from Washington State Department of Transportation. Because again, we're billing based on what, it's like a cost reimbursement, but it is a limit. And there has been times that WASDOT has increased based upon, you know, when we're finding, okay, fuel costs are way much higher than what was projected, because a lot of times the grant applications are done based on what we're anticipating things to be several years down the road. And so.
Is there? Is there any cost to the public on the dial-a-ride? Do you ever?
Yeah, so it it depends on the trip purpose and and individual in terms of classification. So so seniors on the dial-a-ride service, though, seniors which are 16 and older because of our Older Americans Act funding and that, they they pay a suggested donation, because the senior transportation is, which I will say that most of the seniors donate the suggested donation or more. There are some that that maybe do less. And then on the dial-a-ride, Medicaid does not, there's no charge to the recipient, because that's covered under the Medicaid contract. We get the reimbursement from Medicaid, from the state for that. And then on what we call our our kind of public dial-a-ride, there is a, we have published fares that it's based on the distance of the ride. So like a local ride is like, you know, 250 and town each way. And then that, that, though, that's not covering the cost of that, because we're billing that to the grant. And that's the published fare that they pay. So there is a contrib contribution from the user, depending on what classification they are. And then the trip purposes are, again, for dial-a-ride are more specifically for essential type services. So medical, shopping, food, you know, pharmacy. We can do some limited kind of general ones if we have like a ride already going to a location. So we do try to, like, if somebody saying, oh, you know, I have a interview I'm doing in the Dow, then I, it's not working to take the fixed route or something and I can't ride. And we said, well, we have a passenger going for medical, you ride along, but they would pay the fare for that as well.
So are you, for next year, you're planning on using some of your fund balance? You you're estimating to burn some fund balance, right?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I I don't know that right now. I'd have to go back and look what was submitted.
Is the current year, and I, you know, there's the minus number, but it was 109,000 for the current year, next year proposed, it says 78,000. So it's a 28% change. And so.
Because we received less cash support from the county this year than we did in previous years. It was decided this year because we had more fund balance from a lot of the COVID money that came in and that put us in a position that we typically aren't in. It was decided we could in 2023 would use more of the fund balance, but that the funding would kind of revert back to what it was.
Right, yeah. But as we do that, so so if we're using fund balance, it means we're not like truly budget neutral.
Correct.
And and so that was where Commissioner Christopher was going with this, is where are we going to come up with this difference? Because it's one thing if you're if you're budgeting into your grants and planning for it, you know, when you set your grants in in your two or three years out, you're designing, you know, this is what it's going to cost. So have you done that in your, are you adding a, you know, for each one of your grants, you're adding 4% or or more to those grants?
Yes.
And are you anticipating like for next year with those grants that you will be able to absorb the vast majority of these type of?
Well, and what we would have to look at potentially is is looking at, I mean, whether we would have to restrict some of the distance or something within, in order to stay within the the budget amount as well. Because, you know, our Department of Transportation budget, that that grant's already in place, it's a biennium. So it's not like I can just, you know, make that change. And so that that would be something that I would have to look at and say, okay, well, if this is what we have and the county saying that, you're saying, okay, yes, we recognize that your staff need to be paid and we're a competitive wage in order for us to even operate, because we'll have an issue of filling those positions too, would be then making decisions in terms of where, whether we might have to limit some of that service distance or limit the number of trips.
Stay within the budget of the grant.
Right.
That's where I was kind of going. The other thing that I guess I want to look at is the salary survey did not cover any of these clerical admin, I think it did, actually. But that's the only one. Yeah, it covered admin, but none of the van drivers or any of that. The other thing I would have to look at before I can make any kind of decision on those is I understand you're using the comparators around us.
Right.
But those are not our county comparators.
Oh, yeah, and I.
So and and so that makes it hard, because if we, and when we did the compare, the salary study, we used our 10 comparators, but we also searched our neighbors just to get an idea, but we didn't use them in our numbers. So this is kind of the same idea. You gave us our neighbors just to give us an idea about it. We would have to look at what our, because if we, if we go outside of our standard procedure, which is using the 10 comparators and we use only local people for your thing, next week we'll have somebody else sitting here that doesn't want to use the comparators and they want to use their local. So I look at this as two different things. One of them is a request for reclassification of a clerical admin one to a clerical admin two. And then the rest of it is.
Specific to our transit.
Specific to the transit and you're requesting that we relook at the hourly wages of those people. So I look at two different issues here. I can tell you for me on the hourly wage part, I I feel your pain and I I kind of agree with you on the lower rates there. I think they've always been a problem. And and, you know, I, when I sat in the room as a civilian, I thought they were a problem and the van drivers were getting paid less than the interns at the time. And that didn't seem to go over well with me, but I do need more information and on comparators for that one. The change to clerical admin one and clerical admin two, I don't know that I need more information on that. I don't know that my seatmates are necessarily ready to discuss that today or not, but I don't see a problem with that myself. And that's kind of where I'm at on this for now.
I think I need more information maybe on the admin. What is that change dollar-wise? What does that?
Okay.
How does that?
Okay.
What's the ask on that? Being a pending picture. Not that it's not necessary and you need it, I just want to know numbers.
Okay.
Just to give you an idea.
Okay.
And I'd say.
There's a, these are the two dots.
You continue to heap more and more work on yourself. And I'm glad that you're wanting to shovel some of that off so that you can continue doing, you know, the high-level work that you need to do. And with the the reclassification for that clerical admin in order to to take on some of those duties, I have no problem going through the process for the reclassification to do that. It's just so long as as you actually fulfill it and you actually do ship some of that work off.
No, I need to shove it off because I can't.
And you don't have to give me those numbers, Mr. Christopher had the.
Oh, okay.
I was able to give her at least a ballpark from our salary survey number for one and two. Yeah, I I I look at it on that one as that falls right into the line that I keep telling my directors, you need to train and cross-train your staff. You need to get them ready to take over the next position you need to. So if we have somebody that's looking at doing more work, is willing to do more work, is willing to be cross-trained. And and then we say, yeah, whoops, sorry, I know we wanted you to cross-train, but we're not going to pay you for it. I I think that sets a bad precedent in all the other departments. So, yeah, I, I'm not going to have much of an issue there. It would be nice and it would be easier for me to rally the board, let's say, if we actually had cost accounting numbers. I don't know how you do that. But if you had some kind of idea on how much of the increase would go towards grants and how much of the increase would go to county funding options, I think it would help this board digest what the actual cost of the citizens is so that they can make an educated decision whether that dollar amount is worth the service that they provide to the citizens. So I I honestly, I don't know, in my head, I don't see that number being huge, because I think a lot of it will be taken up for in grants. I think a lot of grants, you will just have to live within your budget of that grant. But I do think there will be a little bit of county in there. I just, I guess I'd say it'd be easier to chew on if we knew what it was without just a blanket go for it.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I can certainly get you more specific figures. But and then I guess, you know, looking at the 10 counties that you do compare and I can get the data for what they're doing, because I guess in terms of just even knowing what change, I mean, because we're talking just compared to Skamania, which is typically one that we've usually outpaced as it's a dollar an hour difference.
Well, and that, that's kind of surprising to me, because in our list of comparators, I I want to say that there was one that Skamania County paid more. We were higher than everybody else in our surrounding area.
And we've typically been.
The fact that we're not on this kind of shows you something, shows me something anyway. So, yeah, I don't know how we move forward on this one, though. HR did our comparators. Let us, let us chew on this, have more discussion on this through the day as we've got to get through board pendings and whatnot. Let us have a discussion with HR, chew on it for a week. Maybe if we can bring her back next week at some point, if you have time. Maybe if we can bring her back um next week at some point, if you have time. And um at least by then have some kind of idea on where we're gonna where we're going to go, what we're going to look at, what information we might need before we make a decision. I don't know that we'll need a lot of time, fifteen minutes or something. But I would like to just not say thank you for presenting this and then file it. Um, I would like us to actually dedicate the time to look at the, look at the issue and see if we if we have a problem and what we can do to address the problem and set out a calendar of events to get us to the finish line of whatever that is, so. Any other questions for our director?
I just mentioned that uh talking about solid waste fees, we had a budgeted in twenty twenty of five hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and forty eight dollars. And then twenty twenty two is three hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and sixty eight dollars, twenty twenty three.
Number of you, if you went too fast for me.
Five hundred and forty thousand, six forty eight for twenty twenty. Twenty twenty two was three hundred and ninety, four, six, eight, and this is budgeted. I don't know if this is what was actually used. And then twenty twenty three, two hundred and fifty, six, four, eight. Um, and we're looking at uh twenty twenty four proposed two fifty, six, four, eight as well, is what I'm seeing here on this draft budget.
That's solid resource.
Yeah. That's ours solid waste fees.
And that was the two different ones, because there's one that there's typically two pots. Solid waste fees, one that falls under the transportation area and then another that's under programs.
This was just under the program side.
Okay, and then under transportation, there's an additional oh, amount.
Is that just in your budget?
That's solid waste also. It's just how it's been.
Is that, is that on?
And it's
suffer.
Is it a?
Yeah, I I I'm fine with um we can direct Jen to grab us total numbers um for the last five years.
Oh, then there's, yeah, uh utilities environment, then there's another hundred and forty thousand.
That's right.
And then that.
So that gets added, yeah.
And that one's kind of stayed the same, right?
Correct.
For years?
Yeah, for the last several years. I'd have to look specifically at when, I think probably it was portioned out a bit more it's increa- it increased when we added the fixed route. It was previous to that. It was just kind of the dial a ride transportation part and then very specifically to do the fixed route. There was more county funds put forth for that.
Just the word solid waste funds is making me cringe in our recent environment.
Do you know how much you have in fund balance?
I would have to go look. I don't know, right off the top of my head.
Budgets don't show that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, I don't have more questions.
Any more questions now? I do not have any. Just uh make sure you go tell everybody down there. Thank you for doing what you're doing and keep it up and uh we will look into this.
Okay, yeah, we'll see you next week.
Thanks.
Dead airways on Zoom, but doing math and things, so everybody on Zoom, we're not dead, just bear with us.
Burn it.
What? So it puts them in the ninetieth percent of compared to Skamania. When we did a eighty eight cutoff, I think we ended up paying honestly, we came up to ninety. Yeah, well, for this pay versus this. It's ninety percent of that. So they're not technically. That just adds them in here with there are seven, because I think we we bumped it ninety, but everybody that was over that, we didn't. Go enjoy. Looks like you got another airport board application.
Hmm?
So it looks like you got another airport board application turned in this morning.
That's great.
I may swap through now.
What is it?
B O C C.
Share. Data. That's the only one I'm seeing under appointments airport.
Yeah, I hadn't seen any other ones.
Yeah, where where did you?
I heard there was two. There was a white salmon one and then a crap lake one and then.
For the airport board?
Yeah, but I haven't looked and then I just saw this one in the email box, so I just assumed this is a third.
Maybe there was interest and they haven't done the application.
I, this is the first I've heard. Whose position is it?
Norm D O S.
Norm's position's open and James had put you use Norm as a reference.
And that's James wanted him to, or Norm wanted him to fill.
James, oh, okay.
He felt like that would be his suggestion. Um, and I know we have an airport board meeting on Friday. I don't know if we can go ahead and make this decision, but they're going to ask if we're filling that position yet.
I'd be interested in the other ones that Commissioner Christopher's heard about.
Do you know of any that have came in?
No. Yeah.
I can't even find the damn driver that has the. All right, where would I find out? Under commissioners in the program? I don't have that in my.
No, it's under data. It's on the regular check of house.
Good. Data. A area, so under commissioners, then on the data. Morning.
Morning.
Lisa, thank you.
And then under appointment, is that what she said? Commissioners data.
And appointments.
I, this is the last thing I got.
Oh, okay. Yes, it did. Alrighty, it is ten o'clock, so we will move on to Public Works Director Jeff Hunter and County Engineer Cesparolo with a public works update.
Okay, we have a few things on your consent agenda. First of all, we have a public hearing today. Uh, we have two public hearings, one at one thirty and one at six for our annual, our six year transportation plan. Uh, I gave you a copy of it. We won't get into it until one thirty, but I did give you a copy and I think Seth passed out the the procedural sequencing too. Uh, other things on the consent agenda, small works contract, our contract bonds between uh Public Works and Columbia River contractors for the replacement of the guardrail on Dot Road and the new guardrail on Canyon Road. If you hear anything, it, the contractor is having a hard, I mean, we've had to get this done, but even though it's still going to be a ways out, they can't get, they can't get parts.
Because I did have a question.
I was going to say, we got, we did receive some calls and we're telling them, you know, contractor wants to do it as soon as they can, but we're back to not getting stuff. I mean, we were sixteen weeks on brake drums the other day. It's we're back to the same crap we had earlier, so they're saying that they're not sure when they're going to get the stuff. They're trying to get it in. Okay, notice the contractors for advertising the two thousand twenty three crushing project at Fisher Hill, Badger Gulch and Matson Quarry. And we also have the uh pay estimate first and final for to all seasons and the amount of a hundred and twelve of a hundred and fifteen thousand, seventy three dollars, forty two cents for the Pioneer Center HVAC replacement project. And uh, that's all I have for that. Go ahead, Seth.
All right, on construction, we're still waiting a schedule from the contractor for the white plastic edge lines. Hopefully we can get them in while the weather's good. Get that project finished. Curve warning signs and guide posts, same thing, waiting for materials to be delivered so we can get started on that. And Jeff already told you about the small works guardrail contract. On the design end, the Biglen Highway area, Pickleton area paving project is on ad and bids will be opened on the thirty first of this month. Sundell Old Highway Eight, we have nineteen of fifteen acquisitions completed for right of way and hopefully more today. Bridge repair bundles, we began the design phase of that project. Crushing project is on the agenda, as Jeff said, and bids will be due on November seventh. And other preliminary work continues.
Okay, on the maintenance side, uh east side is working on the cattle pass. Road was reopened. Uh, they still got a little bit more work to do on that. Uh, some grading and the second shot of B S T on the Pickleton Highway project is scheduled for this week. Uh, west end, they got brushing and the snowed area hauling sand to the Pickleton shop. Mowing and B Z Glenwood and our B Z Glenwood Highway. Uh, grading, a lot of grading this time of the year and uh be helping the east side do Pickleton High, the second shot of Pickleton High. Upcoming facilities, uh window graphics and picnic tables will be complete by the end of November, which will complete that, this building, everything associated with this building. Jail roof replacement, um we would be done. We got the flashing, but it was the wrong color. So now it's on back order. It's a roof cap that goes around the top.
Is it noticeable from outside or is it a sunken roof flashing that you can't see it like?
No, you can see it. I mean, to me, it wouldn't be as big of a deal, but I don't know what color they sent and it's um they put a rush on it since, with the manufacturer, since the manufacturer sent the wrong color. Um, Superior Court hasn't changed. Um, events, we have some, we have quite a few upcoming events, just want to keep the board abreast. Uh, what's going on? We have a goat tying clinic scheduled for November seventeenth through the nineteenth. This is like a national thing, so you'll see that um and a pain event. We like those. Uh, the election information rally has now been, they can't have it in the courthouse long because of the regulations. So now they are requesting moving it to the exhibit building. I had made, they haven't nailed down their dates. I mean, we now we're here and it could be the eighteenth, it could be the twenty eighth. We haven't heard one. That is still in the works. Um, winter riding is going well. We only have ten remaining slots for our season, which is pretty good. The seasonal slots are pretty expensive and we've rented all but ten of them out, so. And uh, we've rented all but ten of them out, so. That's good for us, uh, as far as getting revenue in for the, the fairgrounds. Uh, Fuel Island, like we talked about, the consultant's still working on the design. We actually met with them uh, last week to discuss that more in detail. Sadist Pass grounding has been complete except for uh. Except for uh, the fencing, but that will be tied in here in any day now. Uh, they're putting up the uh, antennas, so level three uh, testing is to start next week and with commissioning still scheduled through the thirty-first.
You're planning on having any kind of a ribbon cutting or anything for that?
For Sadus, we weren't planning on one unless you would prefer one, unless you would like one.
I'm okay.
Okay, we weren't planning on one. Uh, some follow-up issues, um. Bluebird, we're having another meeting with Bluebird this week to. I think we're almost have most of our stuff worked out internally and then uh, the P A will get a look at it, the board will get a look at it. So, we're getting closer to finalizing the road haul. There, there's still a few outstanding issues, but they wanna try to get it done this week. We'll see. See if we get there or not. Um, Wishram Park, just wanted to give you a heads up. I met with uh, their design group. Wishram Park got the, our Wishram School got the, a grant. From R C O to do a planning grant and um, I met with the superintendent Bell Design, who they've secured to do the project with them. And we talked about things at the park. Um, they're gonna meet with the public. I asked them, first of all, bathrooms. We don't want a bathroom at the park, not a permanent flush bathroom. That becomes a heavy maintenance project for us. Matter of fact, the one in Trout Lake Park, we close when we don't have uh. A host there, you know, there, we're not gonna have a host at Wishraya Park. It'd just be, I said, you know, let's kinda move them away from that. I think they have a pretty decent plan about potentially regrading. Uh, the park, the upper end of the park. Um, and actually extending it out a little bit from where the playground facility is, if you're familiar with Wishram Park. And planting that grass. I'm like, okay, grass we can maintain, we're already there, but no weird planters, no wild stuff, no fountains. None of that kind of stuff. But they're gonna meet with the public, cause that's part of this grant, there's a lot of public outreach. So they're gonna get a take on what the public would like to hear. Like, I think they're meeting, I don't remember what they scheduled, but they're trying to, to hammer, get a date sometime in November. So just giving you an update on that. And then the last thing we have is, is, we have about thirteen people in Public Works that may or may not. Get to use up all their vacation. A lot has to do with the weather. Um, and you know, again, we were pretty destabilized for, I think we're pretty stable now and some of us didn't get to take as much vacation. We're kinda chipping away at it, but. We just wanna get a feel from the board. We'd come in early, cause if the answer's absolutely not, then there'll be a lot of people in Public Works gone for a while. But if, if you know, if we can, I, it won't be, I'm not bringing numbers because the idea is to chip away at it, but uh.
Any high numbers?
Um, there's a, I don't know. I've been working on mine, cause mine was pretty high, I'll be honest with you. Uh, to be careful, I'd be hypocritical. So mine was probably one of the higher ones. And, but I've slowly chipped away at it.
I will say for me anyway, I can't speak for the board. I am a firm believer on making employees take their vacation because some are workaholics and then they get stressed out. Um, and people need to have vacation so they don't stress out, but. With the first six months in your department being. A little um, new, I, I can kinda understand it. So I would be more forgiving. Um, year one, but not as forgiving year two.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I always never had a problem with people carrying over so that they can do what they need to do and. Every person cares so much about the county and they come to work and they don't take vacation because they got stuff to do. And so, I've always been in favor of allowing people to roll it over.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's all we have.
Any questions for Public Works? We need to meet, but I'm going out of town tomorrow to a conference, so I'll be gone the rest of the week, so I'll have to schedule something with you gentlemen next week.
Okay, we'll be around.
I'm looking forward to the public hearing and hearing what people have to say today.
And I did get an invite, um, which I thought was kinda weird from Ken Nichols on the road hall thing, but I'll be driving up to Anna Corliss, so. He might not be aware that I'm not there, so you might have to tell him.
Well, we've kind of, we've kinda talked about this, Ken's, I mean, Ken's not real new, but this is, he's new to this role. And we've talked, cause he's asked in the past, you know, when he first took over for Brian, should I invite the board? I go, here's the problem. Can't invite the board, they listen in on this, then they can't, if it push comes to shove, then they get disqualified. So they're really, they typically don't take part in this. They look at it, they're decision makers. So this is between, Ken, this is between you and Public Work, between, I've agreed in Public Works to work this out. And come up with something that we agree with and then we'll see what the attorneys and what the board thinks at that point in time. Is how I explain.
He's a little more paranoid than Brian was.
Yes, he's newer to the city.
Yeah. Um, that's all I have. Nobody has anything else for you gentlemen?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you both for all you do. Yeah, we have to get the guardrail up there before uh, the snow and the ice sets in and somebody drives off the damn cliff, but. Good morning, sir.
Morning. Way early, I just assuming you wanted to start, right? Had a schedule.
Okay, I, I worry about giving you an extra fifteen minutes.
Doesn't mean.
You may not have consumed my lunch if I gave you fifty. Um, all right, we are not scheduled until, until ten thirty, but we will start early with our emergency management director Jeff King. And an update of his department.
Morning. Uh, we have no items on your consent agenda today. Um, the public safety radio system is currently operating normally. As you'll see later, we have had several things to deal with since I was here last. Uh, one of which was an open mic issue, which um. Was quite disruptive. It was on the Law Dispatch channel and it went on for. Number of days over two weeks. Without being able to figure out the source of it. I, yeah, after much investigation and trying to determine where it was coming from and who was doing it. Um, and putting the word out extensively, that somebody's causing problems, it finally stopped. Um, so it hasn't occurred for just over a week now and hopefully that's the end of it. But uh, there's somebody out there that has a radio program. Inappropriately, I believe, and is not aware that they're depressing their microphone in their vehicle, so. Nobody's admitted to it, but it has now stopped. Took a lot of time and caused some issues.
Cause somebody's driving around with their mic on their lap and then when they move their bellies poking it or something.
And there was a lot of. It, it was when they stopped and got out, you'd hear the door chime going off and radio in the background.
And they threw their mic on the seat or something.
Uh, not enough to identify.
Yeah.
Hear people talking, but over the rest of it, you couldn't understand them. So. We did our due diligence and like I said, I think that putting the word out to. All different users, not just law enforcement, cause I went systematically. All the law enforcement users that were on duty every day that it, that it occurred and it happened multiple times a day when it did. I eliminated all of those folks, because we have had in the past and as recently as three weeks ago. Where the uh, cordless Bluetooth microphones will key up electronically, not manually, so it malfunctions and. And keys the radio without the user knowing it. Um, it's happened twice in the last few years, uh, but we can track those folks down and got that figured out and replaced their microphone. But this was something totally different. But hopefully it's gone away now. Um, the Juniper Point site uh, generator malfunctions were confirmed to be that uh, switch that I mentioned to you on the real alarm and the start stop. So that got repaired. Um, the generator failure at the click of that site has been. Fixed for now. There might be a more permanent fix that's needed. Um, but Public Works was down there and it's now operating normally on its regular weekly tests for the last few weeks. So hopefully that will continue and any uh, additional repairs that need to be made, Public Works is still troubleshooting. Um, the flat top security fence and shelter exterior damage's been repaired. Um, I'm still working with Public Works on that fence because it's. Um, not quite to my liking, but. The uh. The majority of that work has been completed. Uh, annual tier one preventing maintenance is still ongoing. Um, the. It's on hold for the Sadist Pass site work that we're doing. This month is the final push, as Director Hunter indicated. Um, it's my primary focus right now. All other things are taking a backseat. Um. And the Pickleton site microwave uh, issues are still under investigation. For now, they have ceased. So, we're not sure where that interference is coming from or what might be causing it, but. Tier one and tier three is installed test equipment to monitor that and are keeping an eye on it, but for right now, it's been quiet for the last few weeks. It was also a report from Vinge and White Salmon Police Department of low and missing audio. I think that I brought up at last update, um, determined that that's not anything in our system that's causing that. And I've continued to follow up with the officer that's having that issue. Originally, it was reported to be multiple officers. I don't have any evidence to that effect. That I've been able to prove, so I'm working on what might be wrong with their equipment and how it's being used. Um, Diamond Gap Cellular Service Provider co-location is on hold. Again, for lack of time. Uh, lease agreements up for renewal or in the process of uh, vetting is still the uh, P U D. Their expansion project is ongoing. Um, the tier three provider has vetted their original application. And request and is recommended to uh, proceed. Working, we have an interlocal with P U D for us to share radio sites and system. Uh, technology and all that microwave transport, so we're gonna see how that uh, agreement needs to be amended so that, for their new use. Um, and whether another agreement needs to be created or not. Um. And it's down to made a verbal request for equipment upgrades at Flat Top, but then has since gone silent, once I told them their requirements. We'll see if that proceeds. Um, but since that site is on D N R land, leased land, um, adding. New co-locators or any changes to equipment has to go through their approval process at D N R. As the prime leaseholder, we have to go through them before we can let others do things. Um, and at Juniper Point, uh, Blue Mountain and K V H subtenant agreements are up for renewal. Uh, Blue Mountain is gorge, was Gorge Net, now Blue Mountain. Um, and I intend to approach them again about the use of uh. Uh, internet that they have at that site for our security cameras that we're working on putting at different sites. Um, they did have the security camera. At Juniper Point years ago and when it failed, they just didn't replace it, so. Hoping to work a deal with them so they can provide that internet for their security and everybody else is at the site. Any questions about that before I move on?
Other than those topics?
Excellent. So interlocal agreements or radio system use and nine one dispatch services. Uh, City of Goldendale is up January twen- thirty-first, or excuse me, February. December thirty-first, City of White Salmon is up at the end of February. Those contracts um, have always. Since I came on board, have included a three percent annual increase. We have had the discussion of increasing or negotiating some increase in users fees. Um, for the cities. And I'm here to ask if you want me to. Go to the cities and negotiate, one of you wants to. Do that, or do we wanna just renew?
Why did they pick the number of three percent and not a number that's based off C P I? And later? Any idea?
Yes, because the, the average. And an industry standard is a three percent increase um, for the C P I and COLA and all those things. Um, just the incro- increased cost of doing business. Um, and we agreed, the city and the county agreed that instead of doing. The C P I calculations, we have those in other agreements and you know, they're eighty percent whatever of C P I for. Some area, one of our radio sites, that actual C P I. Number that the feds do um, went away, so then we had to redo the whole agreement. Um. It just complicates everything and everybody's ability to budget for it. And for both for us on the revenue side and then for on the expense side, so we agreed that a fixed uh, percentage was the best for everybody.
Yeah, and I guess you can't have your cake and eat it too until, no, four percent this year, cause it may be two percent. I don't know when, five years from now.
Do you feel that the services they're providing is fair and equitable, or do you think they're getting a good deal?
Um, the service that they get from us, um, has always been subsidized by the county. Yeah, that, if they went to pay. You know, a full market value for the service that we're giving them, uh, it would be more than, than this. And the, the numbers that I inherited in those agreements. Uh, like I said, when I got here, there was no annual increase. It was just a set number. Uh, there was no information that I could find on how those numbers were generated, except for it was tied to population. The population of the city times some number. But those weren't included in the uh. In the agreements or any documents that I could find. But it was the board at the time. Agreed with the director when those were put together. But yeah, how much? What we have to provide for ourselves, so county, law enforcement. Um, Public Works and all those things and answering nine one calls. Versus the amount of work we do specifically for each city. Would be another calculation we could figure out.
I think based off population, it's the quick. And um, not. I don't know what the correct word would be.
Less time consuming for staff?
Well, it would be far less time consuming, but it would also be far less uh, punishing uh, for some communities. Uh punishing uh for some communities. Uh than if you did a. Number of phone calls kind of blah blah blah, and then went into negotiations every two years based off. Number of phone calls and you have to try to figure out if it occurred inside the city limits or outside the city limits and.
Yeah, there are many different metrics that people use to determine users fees. And a lot of them that I've seen get so complex that it it takes hours and hours to calculate those and then you're. You're you're doing them on past years, so yeah.
Yes, relation seems nice and easy.
It is. And it's still fair. And you know, the the base rate is what should be considered, um because you know. Our nine one one communications officers don't get paid for what they do every second of every shift, they get paid for what they're. Trained and capable of doing. You can't tell what the call volume is gonna be like or how serious the call is gonna be or you know, how many calls a certain jurisdiction is gonna get. But they have to be there to answer that phone at any point in time and be trained and capable to do that. That's what that I said, that base rate is for. Have the service available as well as in with the radio system.
Well, and we know the the cities are being subsidized with this because if they had to set up their own dispatch center. Uh with their own employees, um yeah, we're million bucks anyway.
At uh that's not.
It's it's just not possible. Uh so I don't know, I don't know the answer, but I also don't know that going in and trying to. Uh renegotiate and trying to put more. Have them put more skin in the game is worth the work or the effort for the five thousand dollars or something that. We're gonna get out of the end result.
And I agree with that assessment, the. At in the end of the day, unless it was some astronomical increase that they couldn't afford anyway. The budget deficits that we're looking at. For nine one dispatch and the radio system operations and maintenance. The increase to them would be insignificant in that budget.
Where's that line item in the budget for how much the cities pay? Is it under, it's not under nine one one, is it?
No, it's under the one thirty five.
You have a estimate of how much that is?
I'm not prepared to get into the details of that today.
Yeah, I would say I would always advise not to pull numbers out because. Somebody out there tends to use the exact number, even if you say, I think it's around. Then it becomes the number and you're wrong, so.
Yes. I'm just trying. But yeah, we wanna. I think in the in the past, um Jake was. Gonna go with me to have some of those discussions, if any one of the board members wants to engage in this. If we in fact want to revisit it.
I'll look in, look to see what those numbers are and get back to you. I know those the cities are not in good financial shape and. I know how long it took to do the negotiations for the court cost and. We've got probation and everything else and.
That's kinda where I'm coming from, we just did the courts, we were gonna work on probation. It would be my recommendation to. Maybe leave this one. For another year. Uh and readdress the idea. Um next time. Uh because I just don't think the dollar number is going to be there.
If you could though, um since you know that there's different ways of calculating it, um see either. Skamania County or Yakima County and see how they do it and about how much it is. And then see how far off we are from that median. That would. So say if if we're if our cities are paying fifteen cents on the dollar compared to what Stevenson Spain's coming in account.
Oh, so you're looking for a, so essentially check our rate versus the number of citizens. So you're paying four point six cents per citizen and then try to check some other counties rate, see what they're paying for citizens, that's your question.
Look for comparables, yes, we do in wages and benefits.
That's an interesting idea. Just give us some. I uh I don't want to spend a bunch of time, but.
And I I won't, I can test uh my admin assistant with some of this, but. Until uh status pass radio site is. Is optimized, commissioned and cut over.
And that might be a good one, that'd be to just do a quick math on. Our neighbors. Um just a couple of neighbors, give us a little bit of insight.
You know, the other thing to to note in this, uh sustainable funding is later on. Uh and and we are watching what um. Lewis County, pretty sure it was Lewis Cowlet's, one of those two. Um and their election uh is ballot measure for the emergency communications exercise tax. Is and how that's gonna go is they're asking for the full two tenths of a percent. But we had also discussed the other. I think you, I think you mentioned in law enforcement, I wasn't familiar with that and haven't had time to look into it further. But um I know under the emergency um communications tax. Um then that would. It has very specific requirements to form uh a. Agreements, interlocal agreements and have an advisory board that included every one of the users. And then they would have direct input into how the system was managed and. Operated.
Interesting.
So on and so forth, so uh. What I have noticed from those sorts of dynamics, both in emergency management. And um in radio and dispatching is that um you end up with a committee, in our case, it could be a committee of. Twenty people or advisory board, yeah, from. We have eighteen fire agencies, three law enforcement agencies, you know. Uh in the EMS district, everybody having their say and a vote. How do I put it nicely, gets complicated. End up fighting over whose priorities are more important and what projects want to get paid for based on. Their individual disciplines needs and so on.
We have one of those already, I don't like it, so I don't know that I want from another.
And it can work great if you've got the right group of people that are willing to collaborate and and you know, agree upon the collective.
And not your own projects, yeah, no, we have one of those already.
Be divisive, yeah, so. Those are all considerations when we get talking about that sustainable fundability. In the future, but as last time I was here, you told me to put all that on hold until I hear back from you about the other. Funding source.
Yep. I would agree, and unless something's changed, if it has, my teammates will let me know.
Alright. Uh let's see, the radio project, as I said, that is my primary focus for this month now. Has been and will continue to be um. I know Director Hunter uh gave you a brief. Update, but um. I'm more involved on the ground level with all that. Next, right now, they're putting microwave dishes at the emergency management. Facility up on the monopole and um they'll be tying those together with the. Ones that already at SADIS and turning on those microwave equipment this week and burning those in, so they have some. Time to work and make sure there's no bugs in that as well as installing the uh. The VHF antennas on the status pass site. Ran into a few hiccups, but uh been able to. To overcome all of those challenges in the last week and a half. And we're back on track, there was a few things that could have stopped us for weeks or months. Uh thankfully, um we've had some spares in inventory. Uh in the way of antennas and other options for. Uh using people to commission the site. And uh so that will be on track still and the. Proof of performance test is scheduled for Monday, I had it listed on my agenda for. Uh Tuesday, the thirty first, but now it's scheduled for Monday, the thirtieth. And I heard your uh question about a ribbon cutting, that that's really. You know, not a public thing, but that's. The the customer, so us, the county from the engineering firm consultants.
We just thought it would be potentially. Nice to inform the public in the media through such an event that. The county is addressing the nine one one communication needs.
So I can put out a media release uh related to that, ha- you know, an actual ribbon cutting, we don't want to do that at the location up there. But what I am going to do is invite the users that are directly affected, so Rule Seven. Uh even Centerville, it it should clear up some of their overlap uh communications issues in Centerville, the town of Centerville itself. Invite those fire chiefs and their staffs to come along for that. Um proof of performance testing on Monday, the thirtieth and be involved in that. Take a couple snapshots of that and and put out a media release related to that. Definitely appropriate. But it's really those um. End users, the the fire districts, the EMS and law enforcement folks that work in the field to say. You know, go ahead and test your radio here where you've never had service or poor service or or we've had to use the trailer repeater. You know, north of Box Canyon Road to the county line now, go up there, test it out, make sure. That the county is getting what they paid for. Um that's what that Monday, the thirtieth is for.
Send me an invite. That's a long time coming for this and.
Oh boy.
A lot of. I've, at least my district, I've had nothing but comments. Uh since the day I took office on when are we ever going to and. Give me a time, give me, I gotta put it in the budget, give me a minute.
Yeah.
Uh so it'd be nice to have that result.
I couldn't agree more. I've been. Directly or indirectly working on this since two thousand and fourteen.
Glad we did it when we did it, because finding the one point six million now would be a little more challenging.
Yes, agreed. But it was, it's it's the last site in the uh original project, um so the last phase. In that and until something changes in technology or FCC requirements. This should be the last piece of the current. Radio project. And it should fill in a very necessary hole. That we've been mitigating with the trailer repeater for several years now since. Why, when did I put that up there? Eight years ago, something like that, so.
It might be our last project, but I don't think it's a the last ask of the users.
No, no, there's always something changing, like I said, new technology or new requirements, I mean, this. This simulcast system was was partially precipitated by the FCC's requirement to narrowband and but. It was mostly needed because of the lack of coverage we had in our old, old radio system. There was only three sites across the whole entire county. That created safety issues for all the users as well as the public. So this has been a very necessary thing, the timing was just really. Uh necessitated by with the FCC's mandate. And as I've mentioned to you before and past years. There's still talk about mandating that we go digital eventually, but nothing serious on the horizon. If that happens, that should be years in the future. And all the people that have chosen to go digital trunked, all those other higher technology systems um. Have not generally been happy with. They are problematic. And way more expensive.
So there hasn't been a lot of talk here locally about drawing Trump?
No. I don't see why anybody in our user base would want to do that.
Good, because I like to listen.
Yeah, there's that too, Scannerland. Um but in based on those things uh and the use of a new uh sub to be doing the uh. Commissioning and and the uh testing. Uh I've gonna rework the entire cut over plan for the users, we're gonna be doing that instead of one day. Uh that's gonna be done over a process of four or five days. That we're gonna move users from one channel to another and be paging off of our backup systems and so on and so forth. So uh next week will be a very busy week. Um for me and the comms officers.
Curiosity, you have the status pass on your up that you have proof of proof of performance testing uh is written on October thirty first, you said the thirtieth.
That's correct.
Is it the thirtieth or the thirty?
It is the thirtieth, yeah, it just got changed yesterday.
Yep, well, then good, send me an invite, thirty first, I'm sitting here, so.
Yes.
Which is Halloween, wanna know what you're wearing for your costume.
Okay, anything else on the radio project? Uh nine one call taking and public safety radio dispatching, as you can see, Chief of Operations. Uh Phil is not here today, he is uh training. The nine one one Fall Forum state level, uh they moved it from the Tri-Cities. Where they've had it for many years up to Wenatchee, so I. Uh wasn't willing to take three days out of my schedule to go up to the director's meeting for that and uh they didn't provide an online option, so. Bill and one other comms officer is up there for training, Phil's gonna sit in the director's meeting and give me a full report when he gets back. Nope, I skipped a line staffing, very, very happy to report that even though uh we. Uh recently lost one more communications officer. That uh we have two communications officers in training and they are doing very well, in fact, they're. Completion of training timeline was just moved up. A couple of weeks each and they're in the final phases of training now. So we should have hopefully one of them out of training by the first part of November and the other one by the end of November sometime. Depending on their progress from here. So they'll go into the uh. Into the uh. Phase where they're they're doing all the work, final phase, and they're just being overseen by their trainer. And only there to step in if there's some critical issue. So we're excited about that. Uh and then that would, if both of those trainees successfully complete their training, that would make us fully staffed. For communications officers. There's not enough smiles up there.
How long, so the one that we just lost, how long was that person employed here, but they they were out of training and they were a comms officer, correct?
Correct.
They did only work here a year, two years.
Uh less than a year and a half. Yes.
Yes, there's smiles that you're fully staffed. Now you just gotta keep them that way.
Yep, I understand completely, but this this is a milestone. So only twice uh in the last three years that we've been fully staffed for any length of time. And uh we've got a great team of people. Currently, and I don't see that changing for at least a number of months. We have a couple of people that could retire next year if they chose to. Two of them. But. We're in constant contact with them and they're, they have committed to make us aware. So that when they make the decision, when they want to retire, we can take advantage of those. Training boxes, those uh communications officers in training casual. So we can start training people before uh they go out on vacation.
I will say that I do appreciate. Your.
Excuse me, retire.
Taking the time to recognize your employees. Um with the certificates that they receive and you're the public. Show of appreciation, I think that goes a long way in solidifying. Uh employee good health, mental health anyway. Uh and letting them know they're appreciated and and I think you're doing a good job.
Thank you, yeah, and that's something I neglected to put on here. Was that we, if you, if anybody's not aware, we did post that, put out a media release, we had uh. Two communications officers that were involved in helping someone give birth alongside the road, which. In this industry is a rare event, usually and they give those instructions, but then the ambulance or uh. The ambulance or uh first responders show up or they arrive at the AM or ER before the actual birth. So it's rare that they get this historic award is what we call it.
Where was the word to call originate?
Uh High Prairie. Yeah, and and that initial call uh came in and was dropped. It's a cell service and then picked up again and and like pull over now. And they delivered the baby right there over the phone on the side of the road. So, yeah, we're we're proud of them for that and that's, like I said, that's a milestone. And one of them. One of the communications officers uh was one of our brand new folks that just came out of training earlier this year. So that was, it's a big deal. It's a big happy deal instead of a lot of the other things that they do. Um and if you want more details on what makes that even more significant, I can tell you later, but we can't give out names. So moving along. Yep, the the training standardization and certification committee is still on hold at the state level, but we're. Engaged and ready to participate, continue to participate when they. Start up again, looking forward to seeing what they produce and having a voice in that process instead of getting left out. Also, the cross discipline training task force. I'm gonna move forward with a kickoff meeting in November, even though I haven't uh got. Certain disciplines to commit to. Participation yet, we're just gonna, with the ones that I have, we're gonna uh kick it off and see where it goes. We've already been engaging uh the users for many different things. We think that this collaboration will help. We keep, as we reach out to individual entities to give them training. We keep finding instances where both parties. Realize that there's things they didn't know about how the other discipline works and how we can make our. Work together better, so. I'm gonna pull the trigger on that. And kick that off in the middle of November, if things go according to plan. As of now. I already mentioned sustainable funding and monitoring Lewis County's uh elections. The emergency management program wildfire reports after the burn ban was released. We did start having better weather and again this weekend or actually the middle of this week, we're supposed to be in the seventies again. That's good and bad. But we did have a handful of escaped burn piles after the burn banner was released, but the conditions were such that. They didn't go anywhere. There was no significant fire activity because. The humidity and fuel moistures was high enough that it didn't take off. Uh and that's what we're looking for now in a burn ban. You can never protect everybody from themselves. Um and but those people, because of the new uh code, that code update that we did. Um both fire agencies and law enforcement have been working together and citing those folks. One of which had multiple piles. Which is not okay, and then they escaped because they were doing it also when it was very windy. And uh yeah, it it got like a hundred by two hundred feet. But when fire and the deputy got there, they dealt with it appropriately and. Hopefully those folks will learn from their mistakes, but we. The burn ban also um. Helps, well, you know, taking it off at the appropriate time helps when the other landowners. Doing prescribed burns, so US Forest Service. The uh Mars Group, the Fish and Wildlife at the Convoy Reserve, they've all done. Uh prescribed burning already and I'm I'm sure with the forecast that we're having coming up this week and into the weekend, they're gonna be doing more. Actually, Mars used several prescribed burns for a training activity where a bunch of people came in and. And got to do live fire exercises and training. From those prescribed burns and they were also invited by the uh US Forest Service, Courtney Gorge Fire. Scenic area fire to participate in the prescribed burning they did at Courtney Road area and so on, so. This year kind of looked like one of the worst years because it got real wet and they couldn't get much to burn. But that's turned around. Last weekend they did a few different burns and this weekend, later this week even do more. But if the burn ban is still on when they're doing that, then nine one one gets overloaded anytime somebody sees smoke. So through community messaging, collaborating with all those different agencies, we've been able to really minimize. The number of nine one calls we got.
I appreciated burning my pile before it was soaking wet. I did find it interesting that I heard on the radio that it was Wasco County, Sherman County, something just lifted the burn ban. Uh but not for slash pile, but for small piles and burned barrels, I thought was interesting too.
Yeah, and that was a discussion that we had with the fire chiefs was, you know. We call recreational fires, you know, your campfire have a different burn ban for that versus piles. That just gets complicated and confuses people. And yes, burn barrels are not legal in the state regardless.
But they are across the street, yeah, so you can, you can shoot your silver gray squirrel over there and cook it over a burn pile.
Yes, sir, I believe that's true.
I digress, sorry, go ahead.
Nope, but anyway, those in my uh my world, those are all good things and timed it just right this year. Everybody's gonna get to do those prescribed burning and cause a lot less contrination. And the public messaging that we've done in past years is finally getting around. People understand it. We we still get complaints. Uh and we direct them to those agencies that are doing the prescribed burning, but some people. Are very adamant that there shouldn't be any and they complain about the smoke and pollution from that smoke.
Do most of the bigger agencies notify you ahead of times? You know what's going on and you don't have to trace it down after you get phone call?
They all do now. We dealt with that a few years ago and yes, they all do now. It's a very collaborative and productive relationship that we've developed with all of them at this point.
Well, and if they handle it correctly, then we can open the burn earlier and.
It's taken time, but everything's working great right now. See, where do we go? School safety, we had a meeting with that school safety committee, all the. Schools across the county and the uh ESD out of Vancouver representatives talking about school safety and what we can and can't do. Get done, still actively engaged in that and making progress. Been out um to give stop the bleed training to Glenwood and Clickitad school districts, got nineteen folks. Um through that process, so they can help themselves in those remote communities. Something goes bad before uh anybody else can get there, that's the goal for that. Um but mainly, our focus has been trying to get access to any security cameras that they have so they can be monitored and dispatched. When a call comes in of some violent activity or actor on the school premises. As well as getting access to. Or having them create ways that we can gain access to the building when they go into a lockdown. That's one of the issues, first responders show up at at an entry point and it's locked down and then they have to break in themselves or find something else. Trying to get get through that, I won't explain it because we don't want to give anything away to the bad actors. But that's all very productive and uh folks are working together. To make that more reasonable. Um oh, on the emergency response information uh for business forms, it's going through with the planning department. Talked to Lori Anderson, I think last week or the week before, and she's engaged in that now. So um that should be part of the C. The CUP process and other permitting processes in the future. As well as we're gonna push those forms out to the law enforcement so that when they're contacting existing businesses. That we can get that information from them and make any emergency response to their facility uh more efficient and effective. Based on the information that we gather. Uh we had a regular EDM volunteer training. List of grants is there as always. Continue to work on all of those. One good thing was that the FEMA funding hold that was placed. Just before I came to you last time, uh had was lifted last week, so uh all those projects that we had put on hold. Including the PUD. Substation and water site security projects are now available to go forward.
What is that PUD unmanned out of a water site? Never.
So like well facilities for outline communities that the PUD runs, they have. Potable water and wastewater facilities at many communities and um. We are working on. We're, we are facilitating pass through grant funds for them to upgrade their security at those sites so they're not vulnerable to bad actors. And again, I'm not gonna give away too much. Community outreach. Community meetings, when we're invited, we attend those and not only give them the preparedness um. Information, but also sign them up in the emergency notification system. What was very interesting from the report I got back from Frank and my volunteers uh for this one that they did last Saturday. For the Ponderosa community, that when it came to signing people up. That were at the meeting was almost a hundred percent, we're already in the system and. My belief is that's because of the night road fire, when they were all put on level three evacuations and. Their they their neighbor got them and they didn't, they immediately sign up. That's really what it takes for. People to sign up unfortunately, unless they attend one of these events. But that's good, they're signed up, that's the goal, we'll take it. Uh and the SUAS uh program is going well, had the last basic uh training qualifications for the year. And got four new members out of that that took the training and qualified. And then had the monthly training on Saturday as well and uh it's worked out really well to be able to use the fairgrounds. Both for day and night operations, gives us a place we can go and and have free airspace and. And not have to worry about a lot of other things that we do in some locations, so. And that's all I have for my report today.
Hey, thank you, sir. Um comments, questions?
And again.
That was only forty five minutes, what happened?
You said you wanted to go to lunch, so. There you go.
They gotta kill that.
Well, the invitation always stands to come to our facility, let me know, give you a tour and uh do a sit along. Comms officers would love to see you and explain to you what they do and how they do it and. Challenges we face and the successes that we've had, so if you wanna come and.
They probably already see me too much, but.
Not sure what you're alluding to, but uh if you come for a visit when I'm not there. That's been done in the past too. Ask my folks, like I said, we've got a good team of people right now and um moving in very positive directions.
I appreciate it, sir, and I appreciate all that they do, so thank them for me and uh.
I will.
I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll follow up with you. And I'll just send you the uh information on what the cities are paying currently for user fees, kind of you don't have to.
Oh, thank you. Jared, do you have anything um that you'd like to add to the agenda for this afternoon or?
No, I need to make a note. Where did you get your numbers on dollars going to log app, did you get those in general, did you just look them up in the budget or work, because I wanted to get those. All county dollars flowing the log app numbers. Do you remember how this does?
Yeah, I don't remember.
And share when you get them?
I can do that, well, yeah.
Could, would you like to talk about airport board appointment that's been a few weeks and. We do have at least one application and we do have our board meet, our no regular board meeting this Friday.
Yeah, you'd like to add?
One more thing off our list maybe.
To add on.
How long is that opening been? So the general public has had how many weeks to apply if they so wanted, two, three?
Or um it was announced at our last regular month of the meeting.
And that's the only opening we have, right?
Yes, on the airport broadcast.
I didn't know if um Oregon had any.
Ready to go over if there's something to add to the. No, um. I had. The acronym. South Central Workforce.
The Development Council?
Yeah, Board of Commissioners yesterday, it just went over uh budget, they talked about uh. Training that our people went to and whatnot, it was. Fairly not allowed to update you on unless you want a copy of their budget or something. Yeah, that's about all I'll get into on that. It it's mainly Yakima and really. Uh Kititas has a good little portion and us in Kermania are over here on the other end of the world. Uh I will say it was. The best part of it is. The new Yakima Commissioner is the chair of it. Uh he seems very. Every time I deal with him on one of these, he seems very knowledgeable, very smart, very active. Um ASA took the place of Richard Mahar.
Okay.
First Kermania. And it's the only board I sit on with him and he's he's very active and very knowledgeable and it, and so it was. I don't know that through that whole meeting, if I had to make a motion for a second, because. And it's like the first time on that. Usually that board is pulling teeth to get enough people there to make a forum. And you'll make a motion and it just sits there because I don't know what anybody else is doing. Uh you know, waiting for a second, uh so it's it's a good group on there now, so it's um.
And they're both new commissioners.
And it's, well, I think the kid attached guy is new too. So yeah, the scary thought is I've been here two and a half years and I think I got seniority on now, which is scary. Yeah, um. Trying to think of what other eighty stuff. I can't think of anything to add uh. Or pending, I did think about maybe checking with the insurance group, the kid for that conference I have next week. To um. See if they're going to have a Zoom option. You see. I was gonna see if the sheriff's office wanted to at least uh zoom in and. Pay attention that way. Oh, something we need to put on our agenda that's not already on here, we need to. Uh appoint an alternate board member for that board. Uh it used to be the prosecutor when he stepped down and we needed to do that last week and we forgot, so we might want to add that to our agenda this.
For the risk board?
Anyway, the whole conference is, and I can't find the agenda. I'll keep looking as I talk. The whole talk is, talk is about uh. Risk and uh, trying to remove risk from um, law enforcement jails. Um, that kind of stuff. So I thought rather than. You know, me and Rob will be there, but we don't run the sheriff's office or the jail. Um, so I was hopeful that I can find a.
Well, I don't think Rob's gonna make it up there.
Any maybe.
Yeah, he told me this morning he wasn't gonna be able to make the risk thing.
Um, but it it it's gonna be far more valuable. Uh, to the people that make the decisions in that office. So I was hopeful that uh, they could at least find little pieces of the agenda that. Might be entertaining and zoom in, they might. Sometimes they do a Zoom option and sometimes they don't. Um, and that's why I need to to look at, cause I just got to thinking about this morning, so.
Well, if our chief jail jailer can zoom in, that would be great.
That's kind of what I was thinking. So they may not, I mean, they're not a member. They probably don't get asked a lot of questions, but. Sure, if they wanted to, I don't know that it'd be a big problem, but enough being uh, I'll have to do some research. If I'm not finding it here, my hope was to find a Zoom option and an agenda and forward that over in case they so were inclined.
Do we need? Our motion this evening to adjourn, do we need to notice that we have our K L C K radio on Thursday?
Oh, that ought to be fun. That's that's the board of directors part of the conference, so. Uh, you may get me clicking into the radio on that one and you may miss me on that one. Just so you guys are aware.
Thank you.
Did you all receive the message from the prosecutor that he would not be coming over once a month to give us the go up page?
Right, that one and the one that was sent. Yesterday, uh, yesterday at noon. Did you want to discuss any of that? We've got till six, so.
Uh, maybe. I don't, I don't know that I won't necessarily put it on the agenda. We bring it up, we'll add it. Unfortunately, we do. In the next week or two are going to need to talk about potential litigation, but I also have another. Um, opinion request because it's in my understanding of the R C W, the executive session. Cannot go in a music session and talk about. Um, pending litigation without your attorney present. So if your attorney isn't present, you can't do it, which means we'll have to have that discussion in open session when we get around to it, but um. I want to clarify that with prosecutor.
I I didn't read the letter to um, state specific things that he needed to come to, like we request pending litigation update. He's done that before. It was the monthly update. But he said no to. That was my understanding of how I read that.
Uh, yeah, well, he worded in there that if he had something to notify us that he would schedule a time.
Or we could ask if we have something like pending litigation. If it's specific.
Um, yeah, that would work.
Cause I think he's done that in the past.
Uh, let me get a answer to the question I have in and then. Um, I would just advise them that we would like to talk about a specific subject and ask him if he's willing to attend. Uh, and if he is great and if he isn't. Okay, dude. I don't know, that's all I can think of off the top of my head. Think we are going to need to ask. To find out a question, apparently I'm sure we all heard the results of the planning commission yesterday.
No.
No.
I'm.
Um, unanimous to. Pass on to make the interim zoning ordinance permanent. I know before Moshi left, she created a draft. Um, document and sent it to prosecutor for review. We already have that review back. The question I have lies is procedure. Once the planning commission makes its recommendation. Do we have to have another public hearing? I'm getting a nod, so it's like the general public is so angry about how many public hearings do we need to have? It is, I keep telling them, I understand, but it's the law and we have to do it the right way or it gets challenged.
Did the public, did the planning commission hold a public hearing last night?
Yes.
And was it advertised as a public hearing and everything?
We we've captured public testimony already.
Eight hundred times.
I didn't think we had to have one. I thought the recommendation came forward to us and we made decisions. Usually Mochi just brought it forward.
Well, I sure wouldn't want to guess on that. It'd be wrong because then it gets. Then it becomes illegal legislation and doesn't have any weight, so. That's probably something we're gonna have to get another legal opinion.
Check back when we've done it before.
Usually what happens is the planning commission gives that recommendation to the board of county commissioners. And the board of county commissioners has that area.
So I'm guessing that's probably the way we're gonna have to go about it and. I don't know when that happens. I guess I will, I will be more for just having a one thirty hearing and not another one in the evening. Uh, the general public is hearing doubt on this issue. So we need to, we need to double check on the procedure for that and make sure that when we. We do get the document, if we do sign the document that there's not. It's not going to be illegal to where it doesn't have any weight because we did it procedurally wrong. So we need to figure that out because I would like to be done with that topic. So if we do have to have a public hearing. I want to make sure we're ready to post it. The minute we're ready to post it. Uh, and be open and done and. And I don't know.
Sorry.
When the planning commission or planning department is going to bring forth that recommendation, whether it's there elsewhere, but. We'll ask and find out today. I'd like to go for, but an exciting stuff. Yeah, we'll talk about this, we'll get there.
Are you interested in a motion?
If we have nothing else to chat about, we have free time.
I'll have plenty of free time this afternoon, too. All right, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, we recess for lunch.
And I will second.
Okay, we have a motion second to recess for lunch. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of recess for lunch, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. See y'all back at one o'clock.
Wouldn't be nice to turn them in, invite if I can.
All right, we are at one o'clock, so we will call the F. We did the recording, right? Yep, I thought I heard it. Uh, we'll call the regular business meeting of the Colquitt County Board of Commissioners to order. Uh, and we will start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda with three add uh, three add-ons. Uh, letter of support for the Hood River White Salmon Interstate Bridge. Appointment of an alternate board member to the risk pool as well as an appointment for the airport board.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and uh, second to approve the business agenda with three add-ons. Any discussion on those? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the business agenda with three add-ons, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the commissioner meeting minutes from September twenty-sixth, October third and October tenth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second on approval of the meeting men, meeting minutes for the dates. Uh, that have already been read. Any discussion or changes on any of those? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the meeting minutes for September twenty-sixth, October third and October tenth, twenty twenty-three is presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, this brings us to a time for citizen comment. Um, I will be advising everybody again that the board has chosen to adopt a new uh, format starting next week on Tuesday. We will actually be starting our board meetings at nine o'clock in the morning. Uh, as opposed to ten in hopes to getting more work done. Uh, but part of that change will be having citizen comment at nine AM. Um, so for anybody listening, starting next week. Uh, if you want citizen comment, call in at nine AM. I will probably still for a couple of weeks allow comment at one o'clock for anybody that didn't get the memo. Uh, but once you've got in the memo at one o'clock, you won't be allowed to talk at one o'clock anymore. You'll have to talk at nine. Um, that way hopefully we can get our agenda through earlier, get our documents signed and. Um, be a little less dis shuffled um, in signing our documents. Uh, with that, uh, start a citizen comment, please give your name and general location where you live in the county for the record. Um, there you'll be limited to three minutes. There should be a clock on the screen um, for all you Zoom land people. Um, with that, we will start in the room. Does anybody in the room want to start with citizen comment? We have a taker.
Now, this is not about gravel, since I know you don't have any, any.
Name.
Dave West Centerville. Yes. Not everybody knows me. So over the course of the months, I've uh, been aware of the conversations gone. Amongst the commissioners, at least the majority part of the commissioners, of a highly displeased uh. With the performance of a prosecutor relative to uh, his duties to this board. Now I've become aware of that once more, he has refused to respond to a directive, that being to uh. Appeal the FSEC decision on the consistency. And I'm somewhat aware of a few of the points he made, which I find to be extremely. Erroneous. I do believe it is time. For you to consider. Going to the courts for outside counsel. I have heard the complaints publicly. I've heard complaints privately. I believe he is derelict in his duty. I am also aware of there are those in many law enforcement agencies or counties who consider him derelict in his duties. I believe that's the course of action you should take. When I was aware of what his stand on on many things. I don't know where he went. When he first took office. He was a superb prosecutor. In the last few years, he's turned into something that is unrecognizable. I'm sorry. Uh, his narrow mindedness is becoming monumental. To the point if he's any more narrow minded, his ears were overlapped. Please take a bit of action.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we will go online if anybody online and then we'll alternate and come back into the room. If anybody online has citizen comment for the board of commissioners. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself or in some other way get our attention. That's seeing it right off the bat, so we'll come back in the room. Does anybody else in the room have a citizen comment for the board of commissioners? Or do you want to wait a little while? Seeing nobody jump yet. Name and general location, sir.
Sure, I'll Jim. Uh, my name's Mark Nolte. I live uh. Three miles north of uh, Golden Dale off of Pipeline, seventy-one Dancing Mountain Road. Anyway, I would like to make a comment that I would like to see the commissioners uh. Put more efforts into curbing the uh, illegal substance abuse that's going on in this county. There's a whole nother town that opens up at about eleven o'clock at night. Closes at about six in the morning. That that most people don't see. We see them occasionally, but. It is a big segment of people and it's not drugs that are legal. And I don't see. Uh, when I look at public records, I don't see significant arrests. I know there's people that we know their names, they're they're public figures. We need to do a better job at bringing the county out of this drug craze that it's in right now. And uh. I know it's hit our family a little bit uh, close and personal and uh, we we just. Know what's going on and we'd like to see the county commissioners. Put a little pressure on prosecutor office, the sheriff's office. I know Bob wants to do what he can and. Maybe he needs more resources, but uh. They're out there. They can be caught. It's not hard. We we need to. Give them three squares a day and let them sit in the county clink for a while. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What was the name again? Was it Jim?
Mark.
Mark, sorry. Okay, we'll go back online. Anybody else online have citizen comments for the board of commissioners today? Raise your hand or unmute yourself or otherwise get our attention. Few new names on the Zoom that I'm not. Used to see. The people, go ahead, the people. I'm gonna say you're gonna need to unmute yourself.
The people disappeared.
Did the people disappear?
Mute. Okay, I guess I was muted. My bad. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to talk today about under canvas. As you are, I'm sure, and I hope that you're aware, commissioners. That the appeal was upheld, the appeal to the hearings examiner. Approval of the conditional use permit for under canvas up off Oak Ridge Road where we all know. I I and if you're not familiar with this, I, you know, uh, it's a shame on you guys because our county has spent. a lot of resources fighting the people in this area to put this small city of ninety-five tiny homes, a resort that will laundry in sheets and towels every day have to be done. They'll have a they'll have their own restaurant. And when you know, when you go glamping, you get a spa. So what kind of chemicals are dumped in the spa? We don't know. And let's go to the road. The road, you cannot evacuate. There is no evacuation plan, and shame on this county for ever letting it go further than that. But here we are today. That forest catches on fire, people will die like Paradise, California, but apparently we're all just collateral damages to these corporations that want to build in our county and push their way through every agency I've watched bought out again and again. I don't know why. Everything's been put out there about the dangers of this location. It's not under canvas, it's the location. The road will have to be fixed. Under canvases, Oak Ridge Road will have to be fixed to accommodate the hundreds of cars of transient tourists that don't understand what gravel roads and cows at night look like. When we live there, we know they don't know. There will be death, probably on that road. It'll po- and probably actually might even happen on Highway one forty-one, where that bridge causes a line of sight, and we all know it, and so does Wasdott. But we were ignored. And here we are, we're going to put in this situation that endangers everybody in this location. And we know it. But it was pushed through, and all I have to say today is, I hope that you three human beings sitting up there realize the danger of what has been put out here, and that you work effortlessly with your road people, Jeff Hunter, and you assure that that large million-billion-dollar corporation pays to fix that road and not the people. It's not our project. We didn't want it there. We fought with our own money. You took our tax money, you fought us back. But work with the road department and assure that you will not let that large organization thing happen without repla- without making that corporation pay for the cost. That's all I ask for you. Protect your people. You're supposed to protect us. We pay you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Let me finish my notes. Uh, all right, we'll go back in the room. Does anybody else in the room have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Okay. I forgot to add that, uh, and everybody's done a great job so far. Um, comments for the public hearing uh, on the Six Year Road Plan should not be talked about now, and nobody has, but I will just point at it. Hey, go ahead, sir. Name and general location.
Um, Robert Brown from Dallasport. Okay, Clickattack County taxpayer abuse. Twenty-five years ago, there was an increasing health issue in the Dal- in Dallasport, Washington. The Clickattack County taxpayer used their good credit to apply for two loans in the excess of ten million dollars to build a Dallasport wastewater facility and associated collection system. Upon completion and handover of the system, there were many documents, including the operation and maintenance manual and the designer's rate recommendations. The first funding rate was recommendation was to operate the plant and do basic maintenance. The second rate funding level was to operate the plant, do basic maintenance, repair, and make loan payments. The third rate funding level was to operate the plant, do basic maintenance, repair, make the loan payments, and build a reserve to fund support of capital improvements and finance major repair replacement of the equipment when it reached the end of its life cycle. The leadership of the county at the time chose the rate which was significantly lower than the minimum recommendation. From the beginning, the Dallasport wastewater treatment facility was placed in financial peril. This caused the Clickattack County taxpayer to make loan payments, and over the years to fund repair to the system with tax revenues and landfill gas grant funds. The Clickattack County taxpayer is invested in the system and deserves a return on their investment, and to have that investment protected by the current leadership of the county, the taxpayers outside and inside of the service area are investors. To gift the Dallasport wastewater system to the KPUD will rob the Clickattack County taxpayers of their investment and any possible return on that investment. The ratepayers will have almost no voice in the system rates and operation. This taxpayer abuse can be found in other subjects throughout the county's dealings. Just research the landfill gas fund awards, who grants the awards, who ends up owning the system that received the awards. The rebuilding of roads, who really benefits a year or so later, for starters. The Dallasport Utility District has sent a letter of intent to the county for the operation and maintenance agreement, and to assume the operation of the Dallasport wastewater facility. The Dallasport Murdoch Community Council has sent a letter of support of the Dallasport Utility District's letter of intent. In my opinion, the BOCC should vote to enter discussions with the Dallasport Utility District Commissioners. The discussion should be for a twenty-four-month agreement. After the first hundred and eighty days, the agreement have passed, discussions could, should start on the purchase agreement. This would give the Dallasport Utility District time to make a detailed survey of the system's condition. There also appears to be a landfill gas fund grant scheduled in twenty twenty-four for the Dallasport wastewater system that should proceed. Remember, at this point, Clickattack County still owns the system. A purchase agreement can be negotiated that could use a percentage of hookup fees and rate revenues as payment. This would protect the county taxpayers' investment in the facility and supply some revenue to the county coffers in these challenging financial times, and give the ratepayers a voice in the rates and operation of the system. The Dallasport Utility District has identified cost savings after reviewing a budget document supplied by the BOCC members to the DMCC members during a community meeting held August twenty twenty-two. That meeting was called for by the BOCC concerning the wastewater facilities' future. Other budget documents have been supplied by Dallasport Murdoch Community Council's Information Gathering Committee's FOIA requests that were fulfilled by the county and the KPUD. The Dallasport Utility District did not make up numbers, as has been suggested. The current operator of the facility is responsible for fifteen facilities across the county. They have very, have a very small work group that is not able to devote the required man-hours to the Dallasport facility as directed by the Designer's Operation and Maintenance Manual or the Department of Ecology Discharge Permit Agreement. I have personally toured, toured the wastewater facility twice. In my opinion, the operational philosophy of the current operator is strictly reactive. Due to the environmental and health significance of this facility, it needs to be operated in a very proactive manner, fully manned, and maintained to the designers and environmental requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You ran a little long, but.
I know.
I don't know that you've ever ran long before, so I obliged you on this one, but try, and I, I kind of could tell you were speaking very fast. So you, you've probably timed it yourself, and we're trying to run.
Right.
So I gave you a little bit of latitude on this one, but, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Robert, can you give a copy of that to, um, staff, so they can put it in the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if you would like it back, we can have them run in there in Zeroxin. Um. Okay, we will go online. Does anybody online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today?
Lisa Evans.
Is she, well, she unmuted herself?
Yep.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Lisa. Oh, she's at the top. I wasn't scrolled up there.
Hi, uh, good afternoon, county commissioners. My name's Lisa, Lisa Evans. I live in White Salmon. Um, I just want to say thank you to whoever, however, we were able to get funds to the auditor's office for creating a dedicated space for processing our ballots. We have an election around the corner. I'm not sure if the space will be ready by then. Um, Brandy and her crew of ballot processors do an exceptional job. We are very fortunate in our county. I watched the process. I observed the process last election of them counting ballots, and I was super impressed by the process. But I was really alarmed by the fact that, that they were having to process ballots in their normal office space, which was interrupted um, just by normal traffic, um, phone calls and other business. So I was thrilled to hear recently that, that, uh, the auditor's office has, um, is receiving funds to create a dedicated space that is protected, that is consolidated and observable. And my only question is, can you tell us the timeline for when this space will be ready for them? Will it be by this next election, which is right around the corner? Or, uh, will it be for next year? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. So we will make sure we answer your question. Um. Okay, we will go back in the room. Does anybody in the room that hasn't had citizen comment yet want citizen comment? Still have about six minutes. Not seeing hands. We'll go back. Oop, I saw late bloomer.
In so many ways. Dave Bart, of Goldendale. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, you all know this, uh, one of the duties I'm concerned about, the prosecutor's uh, decision to apparent, apparent decision to not represent the county in its appeal of land use uh, decision by FSAC. The ca- uh, the prosecutor, as you know, is, is your legal advisor of the legislative authority of the county. Yeah, he's a legal advisor, and whenever he's required, needs to draw up instruments of an official nature for you. He's, uh, among other things, I'm reading from the RCW, he has to prosecute, of course, criminal and civil actions in which the state or the county may be a party, or prosecute or carry out, I guess I would say. Those actions, uh, in my prior life, I received a lot of unsolicited advice on how to do my job, which wasn't always my favorite thing. But it does appear that there is, in looking even at the FSAC's land use decision, that there is a lot of room to pick that apart. Um, just a couple of quick examples. They, in their own decision, they say with respect to the portion of the project outside the energy overlay zone that's in extensive agriculture, they say that because it does permit, for example, quarries, mine sand, and gravel pits, that, uh, broad-scale solar use is, is essentially the same thing, when in fact, I doubt the Board of Adjustment would approve, uh, two thousand acres of quarry in the area that's at, at in question in the area around Knight Road. Um, it says the same thing below, and it says that because the, uh, for example, the processing of sand, gravel, stone, other natural materials, airports, and solid waste disposal um, facilities, if you were going to put another landfill in, in the area around Knight Road or anywhere in the township area, I'm probably sure you would get a considerable amount of feedback. So I think that though they bring up examples from the zoning ordinance about things that could be allowed, it's not on the same scale. I think there's room for the prosecutor or the legal, and whatever legal entity to bring before, to, to challenge the decision of land use consistency. I encourage you to seek whatever you need to do that. There are citizens in the very area of the applicant, current application who, who signed agreements not to do certain things to buy their property. And now the other signer of the agreement is going to change the property use. Um, sort of, I suppose, in terms in violation, so to speak, of those covenants. I- if nothing else, uh, legal advice defends those local citizens to some degree. Of course, their recourse is through their own civil action, but I just think we need to take seriously the needs of the local population and do that. Thank you for your, the time.
Thank you, Mr. Burner. Okay, we'll go back online. Does anybody online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today?
KRM.
KRM. Name and general location for the record, if you would, please.
Hey there, my name is Kelsey, and I live down in Benjen. I just wanted to come on briefly and state my objection to the flock cameras that are being introduced into the county. Most people don't seem to be aware for this push of surveillance, and would be disturbed, I think, if it was more widely known. Um, I have a great appreciation for law enforcement. There's a considerable deal of risk and sacrifice in this line of work, and I want officers to have the resources necessary to safely and efficiently perform the functions of their job. So I get the draw of potential safety, security as enticing when we're confronted with real-life tragedies, the fear of what could happen, because we know that things do happen. And we can think of our kids and our loved ones and want to eliminate risk, risk factors while we want to protect them. There are indeed many things that could be implemented to reduce crime and make society safer. Many think of eliminating firearms in this light, or banning alcohol. No matter how helpful to society some of these ideas appear, it is not in line with constitutional freedoms. The government of China is proficient at recording and monitoring citizens' movements under the guise of safety. But for me, having mass surveillance and data collection on community members going about their lives doesn't feel safe. To have our trips to the doctors monitored, trips to the shooting range monitored, going to pick your sick kid up, going to church, going on a date, going to talk to a therapist, monitored, political bumper stickers recorded, data harvested. I keep hearing them say, it's just recording vehicle data, no facial recognition. So this makes it okay, because I'm usually in my vehicle. My car doesn't take itself on outings. Constantly monitoring my vehicle is constantly monitoring me. Once surveillance like this is invited in, it will be nearly impossible to remove it. You all may have very good intentions in entertaining this, but what are you handing to your successors and their successors? How will they choose to use this and expand this? We live in the land of the free and the home of the brave, we say. So I want to propose taking a step back before we will willingly kind of transform ourselves into the land of constant surveillance, because we live in fear. Thanks.
Thank you, Kelsey. Very good statements, and I'm sure at least I will have some responses when we get to that point, which I think we're at that point. Um, this is normally the time where the board uh, gives responses to the public, but we do have a number of people in the room, so if anybody didn't get a chance to speak and wants one, last call. Not seeing it. All right. Do either of my seatmates have any responses to any of this citizen comment?
What? Russ's iPhone was.
Oh, we have a Russ online. Go ahead, Russ. You'll be our last.
Thank you. Yeah, just real quick, I just wanted to, uh, say that I agree with Mr. West, Mr. Bart's, uh, statements, and it is my understanding that county's got a fund set up for such, uh, services. And I think it's time that we, uh, pursue that avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. I'm presuming that's Russ Hanson for the record. All righty, now do either of my seatmates have uh, responses to questions or anything they would like to say?
Um, I'd like to respond to Mr. West and Mr. Barta, uh, Mr. Hanson, I hear you. Um, and that's, uh, a pretty heavy subject that's impacting our entire county, uh, because it's impacting the commissioner's ability to do their job. So it is something that's on my agenda and something I plan to work my way through. And that's all I'll say about that subject. Um, and, uh, Mark Nolte, um, it's a county-wide problem. It's everywhere, and it's horrific. I've attended as many meetings as I can. Something that's very obvious to me is we need a full press from everybody to get involved. They all need to be at one table at one time, not different meetings. We need to figure something out as soon as we possibly can. It's horrific. It's impacting everybody's families. Um, your safety. It, I, it's just unbelievable what we're seeing. And it is going to get worse. And I hope to help be one of the ones that coordinates as many people as I can get in the same room, legislators, sheriff, churches, cities. Uh, they all need to get on board together. But thank you for coming forward to talk to us about it. Um, Sheri, I have not forgot about under canvas. You know me, I'm working on it, and now I have some pretty big documents to read to understand what those statements were from the courts, so that's where I'm at right now, finding the time to read those documents. Um, and what else do I know? Um, still working on Dallasport. So, and I have all your documents. That's, that's a big bunch to go through, too, but I, we're kind of coming to this point finally, so we'll have to make decisions there and get moving forward with Dallasport. And I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Go ahead. You can go first.
Go ahead.
I'm still working on my responses.
I'll start with Mark. Thank you for coming and, and pointing out, you know, the glaringly obvious issue that we have in this community, this county, and this state. And that is the, the drug, um, issue that, um, the legislature has deemed uh, to make these drugs legal for a while, and, um, the changes that they have done is, is hampered, uh, what our sheriff's office can do. Uh, the way that you used to. The way that you used to drug bust the the drug dealers was is you would have snitches. Well, you don't see snitches anymore because there's there's in essence, if you get caught, there's nothing to do. So why would you snitch? That's that's hampered that side of the 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 table. The other issue is this is this is a community issue. This this is this is cultural. And and it is it is behooves us all to be a part of it. I can say that, you know, from what we have control, we don't have control over the jail or the sheriff's office, but what we do have control over is the new behavioral health department. And we are getting behavioral health therapists that are in the jail to help these people to create a wraparound system so that when they come out, they can feel like they are supported. Because again, this is this is a cultural issue. This it's it's not as easy as just saying spend some time in jail and you'll suddenly change your life and your ways and everything else. It takes more than that. And and so it's going to take a lot of that. And in it all, most of it all wraps around into behavioral health. And and the challenges that have happened, you know, with us as humans since since COVID and in how that changed people's perceptions. We're doing everything we can as commissioners to try to push for that mental and behavioral health programs. Hopefully, we'll we'll soon have outpatient treatment, therapy services that we're providing. But in terms of like actually catching the bad guys, what we need is legislative fixes at the state that will give the tools back to the sheriff's office and the sheriff's department so they actually can stop the people that are dealing it. The people that are taking it. I mean, most of that, it's it's behavioral health issues. I'm honest. Mr. Brown, thank you for your comment. I will read that. I would say that I believe in the past, all rates for Dalsport have been heard, the voice of the people has been heard. We have never adopted rates where the voices did not have a chance. And I wasn't there for a lot of those discussions in the early years, but I think you're absolutely correct. We, the county taxpayers subsidize that system. And we did so for a long time. And a lot of that was an equal exchange because we came in and we fixed the problem that Dalsport was having with the health and the sewers and the septic systems. And it was a huge investment from the counties, from the entire county, investing in a system that has the ability to grow. I look forward to continuing discussions with with Dalsport. In terms of just giving, you know, a county asset to another agency or entity, that is something that, you know, while it sounds really nice, it'd be nice to get it off of our plate and forget about it and make it somebody else's issue. It is, as you say, the county has a lot of meat into that thing. And all of the people in the county have paid for it. And I think by the county continuing to own it for the next while ensures that the county and the taxpayers and the value and the assets of Dalsport, because we all know Dalsport is the only place left in the Columbia Regorge National Scenic Area for growth. And so you see people who want growth and you see people who don't want growth, but I think the county and the citizens have invested a fair amount of money in that. So I can promise you that we will, we will act with all due diligence and respect to all the parties involved to ensure that we're that that system continues to be operated, maintained and upgraded as needed. Miss Bus.
Clock for you.
Miss Bosque. I just want you to also remember that none of this, none of the commissioners up here sitting here had made any decisions with regards to Under Canvas. That went through the hearings examiner, that went through the court system. That was that was not us. Our staff did a lot of work on the SEPA. And I think they did a great job on it. I know it went back and forth and I have read a portion of the the appeals court decision. I have not finished it because we've got a lot of fires, irons in the fire right now. But just remember that we did not make these decisions and we did not direct staff in any way to make certain decisions. And I'll let you answer the rest of them.
Thank you, sir. Stick to what? Well, maybe I won't stick to what. Mr. West, thank you for your statements. I concur about most of it. Marking the substance abuse, you're absolutely right. My seatmates are both absolutely right. We need to have legislative fixes, but we also need to work as a team in our community with all of our stakeholders to try to curb the issue. Unfortunately, I don't believe all of the stakeholders are on board. Because there's stakeholders in our community that are more about social activism. And in doing such, they're bringing more of the drug use here. And while many people don't want to talk about that problem, especially a politician, that's very bad to bring that up. It's the absolute facts. So until we as a community have a roundtable like Commissioner Zoller mentioned, but also bring that social activist group to the table and tell them that we don't like what's going on. That's that's where we're at. And I think that could be coming very shortly as the city is trying to hold a joint meeting with the county to address some of the homeless population and the busing of the homeless population here, which has a big impact on the drug abuse. And you can go right outside the library and watch somebody smoking something off a tin foil. I don't know what drug that is, but I'm sure it ain't marijuana. Yes, it's a big problem, but until everybody gets on the page. Anyway, I will quit rambling on that. I I hear you. Sherry Under Canvas, I'll have to agree with Commissioner Anderson. This Under Canvas happened right when me and Commissioner Anderson got here. It quickly went to a hearings examiner because there was only two commissioners. And I had unfortunately had communications with somebody that I didn't realize was going to be a conflict in my first week that turned into being a conflict. So it went to a hearings examiner. The hearings examiner and the courts have made all the decisions on this. But what I can assure you is your request that we make sure that we work with Public Works and make the corporation pay the cost of the road. You have my word that I will at least be doing that because I've done that from the get go with every corporation or everybody that has used and abused a road. The taxpayer shouldn't be in charge of fixing it for you. So I'm I'm on it. I'm on it with all of the big developments we currently have. Mr. Brown, I couldn't find much of your statement that I disagreed with, if any. And I do believe as we start getting some of these issues that are currently on our plate that are taking top priority off, my hope is that we can get on this Dallas port issue by the end of the year and make some decisions moving forward for all of us and by kicking that can down the road. Ms. Evans, yes, I would love to take the credit for the auditor's ballot processing area. But I can't. That was our wonderful auditor, which I can say I'm happy that I voted for. She's done a great job. I think this ballot processing area should bring hopefully a little more faith and trust in that system. I know it will for me. I don't like the idea of ballots being kept in a closet somewhere. I'd like them all to be in the same room all the time for the minute we get them to the minute we process them, to the minute we count them. There's no room for any kind of questionable tactics. With that, the board did have to agree to that grant and the board is going to have to work on finding a new location for the veteran service officer. So we're currently working on that and timelines for when this will be done. Will it be done by the next election? I don't believe the answer is yes. I believe the answer is no. So it will be done by next year's election, but we will not have it finished up for this year. Dave Bart on the appeal. I I agree with you, sir. I don't know that there is an avenue going forward to appeal on this case, but the issue is not dead in my eyes. I'm moving forward. I do have a couple of legal questions in and depending on the answer to those legal questions will probably answer far more questions on the sheet. Kelsey, objection of the flock cameras. I, again, I agree with you. I worry about Big Brother and yes, while I hear that facial recognition cannot be used. Do I really believe the CIA or the FBI doesn't have software that they can hack into somebody's private camera system? And use it for facial recognition? And and yes, I'm sorry, they can't. They can go to the moon, they can do that. So I have a lot of concerns about the flock camera system. We have not been presented a proposal by the sheriff's office for the flock camera system. Don't know when they might propose such a system. I know they were at city council yesterday. So when they propose a a project, the board will have time to discuss the project. But just want to let you know, I hear you. And Russ, kind of same thing for you as Mr. Barton, Mr. West. Thank you for all that you've done in helping us get to where we currently are. With that, we are a good 10 minutes overtime. So I rambled too. I needed three minute clock as well there, so. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. That's kind of the other thing with our switching to a nine o'clock morning schedule. We're not going to have comments for half an hour. We'll take comments. No, the comments are over. And then when the comments are over, we'll move on. If that's 10 minutes, that's 10 minutes and then we'll move on with our business agenda. If that's an hour, we will take comments for an hour. And then move on with our business agenda. So it's be a much more flowing depending on the day and how many comments we have. But again, that'll start next week on the 24th and comment will be at nine o'clock or nine oh five, let's say. With that, that concludes public comment for today. Next item up for business is 1:30 is public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. And today we have a public hearing to go over the Public Works six-year road schedule. With that, I will actually, yep, thanks. We'll let everybody exit the room that wants to exit. And we'll let Public Works get up their easements and drawings and maps and goodies. And then why they're doing that, I guess I will say I would declare the public hearing open by advertising that the purpose of this hearing is to continue to take public testimony in regards to the proposed Clickatet County Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program for the plan years 2024 through 2029. First item on this public hearing is a staff update by Mr. Jeff Hunter of Public Works. Whenever he's ready.
Okay. Like Mr. Christopher said, this is for the years of 2024 through 2029. As required by state, the county revise and adopt a six-year transportation plan each year. Six-year plan is a planning document that helps the county identify and prioritize projects to address. Not, I state this every year, this is not a budget document. Part of that, annual plan is actually a budget document. Not all the projects on the six-year product plan will be completed within the six years. There are many factors that affect this. Project costs exceed annual capital budget. The need to add emergency projects as in 2013 when we added Boulder Drive because the hill was unstable above the school in Wishland. Delays in obtaining permits or obtaining right-of-way grant deadlines, change in grant programs. And projects get added. There's a lot of reasons why we get added and we'll get into that in a minute. We use county dollars as local match to leverage grant dollars and fund construction projects. 2024 county revenues available for construction is about 950,000 and 225,000, sorry. 225,000 landfill revenue. Grant funding helps us support many of the projects on the six-year. And pastures, we'd be able to at least double our county road fund expenditures with grant dollars. And this year as we were very successful in obtaining grant dollars. A lot of counties and a lot of other jurisdictions have not been able to deliver and we have. And that has helped us immensely because as everybody knows, there's a lot of federal money come down through different programs that needs to be spent. And when counties don't deliver, they look to somebody, our jurisdictions don't deliver, they look to somebody else to deliver those projects and spend those those dollars. Our projects selected for the six-year, many factors are considered in recommending projects. Classic collision history, road safety needs, constructing a good road network with alternate routes in case of emergencies such as fire, flooding, winter storms that can block the primary route. Pavement condition. Maintenance considerations, soft spots, excessive potholes, drainage issues. Also areas that have get all of a sudden got a high load of traffic. And it costs the county a lot to our, we're grading the road all the time. That's another reason why though there's a tendency to change or has been in the past. Could a project receive special grant funding such as school improvement and other grants that helps bring a project to the surface? If it becomes available for grant funding, it may not even be in here. It may be out the seventh or eighth year. But eventually the county intends to build it. If the feds offer us a couple million dollars to do it, we have the ability to do it, we'll move the project forward. Is the project part of a school bus route? Input and requests from citizens, increased public use, current capacity, development pressure. How long is the road being used? And is it used for commerce? Is it a farm-to-market road? Has it special requirements such as, does it need to be all-weather road? Possible, we try to balance our projects between urban and rural needs. Highlights of this year's plan. Reconstruct Sundale and Old Highway Eight. Phase two of the Bickleton Highway Asphalt Rehabilitation and Widening Project east of town. Quite east of town, actually. Bridge repair projects, those are all federally funded maintenance projects. East Road, Market Street, Roosevelt Grade overlays. That's all part of one overlay, Sunnyside Road overlay. And design work on various six-year projects. If you look at those projects, all of those projects are basically maintenance-based. When you do overlays, that's considered maintenance. Heavier maintenance, but more of a maintenance. You're not changing the structure of the road. In 2024, construction budget was has is at draft. It's 11,807,000. Is broke down as the following, $562 million is federal funds. $4,870 estate funds, 225 landfill and 950 road funds. And that point, that concludes staff report. Let's start some questions.
Thank you, sir. Very detailed staff report. With that, again, I will declare the public hearing open for comment. And take comment for a guest or any other comments for people that want to potentially add their roads or whatnot. Please provide your name and address for the record. And we will start in the room. Does anybody in the room have comments on the proposed six-year road plan? Seeing none. So we will go online. Does anybody online have comments for against or addition to the six-year road plan? The first one I saw, I mute themselves, is 2402. And again, please provide your name and address for the record. Or location.
My name, can you hear me?
Yes, but try to speak up.
My name is Kirk Delville. I live at 355 Rattlesnake Road. And I am wanting to put Rattlesnake the last mile and a half on notice to be chip sealed. It's already been improved and ready for chip seal. We've had numerous issues on Rattlesnake with dust issues. We've had debris in the road. We've had a car that's been put two feet in the air and blocking one lane, had to have the sheriff come out and remove it. This year we have dealt with, I've had personally on my vehicles about 12 flat tires. We've had had to call the trash detail because a load of trash was dumped in the middle of the county road to slow the flow of traffic. I've called the road department several times, the sheriff's office several times on these issues. My daughter had a laundry load of laundry basket load of clothes thrown at the side of her car. Laundry basket load of clothes thrown at the side of her car. On one other occasion. Um, it's been an ongoing, ongoing issue. I've even talked to, uh, Mr. Anderson. I've called everybody that I can think of. Um, we also have, uh. A logging outfit that's bought land out here and there's considerable more truck traffic. Myself, I have a construction outfit and I run dump trucks out of here. Uh, it's really been a lot more, um, damage to the road. I just think it would be in the county's best interest to. Spend the money to chip seal this little short, short section of road. And, uh, help the community. We also. Have a rock pit that's opening up on Rattlesnake, so there'll be more truck traffic also on that gravel. It's washboarded it out pretty bad. So that's, uh, what I wanted to put in there for, uh, this part, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Um, we did have another one online, so I'll take that one real quick. Steve M., I believe you unmuted yourself. Do you have something for us?
Yes, sir, I do. Uh, Steve Morrow, twenty six Ridgeview Road. Uh, I live off of Oak Ridge Road. Uh, now that the under canvas legal saga appears to be at its end. Uh, I do have a question, uh, about Oak Ridge Road. Uh, one of the things that seemed to have survived that process. Was the requirement that Oak Ridge Road be brought up to fire access standards. Uh, that I still find that disconcerting in that it's a local access road and not a fire access road. But that being as it may, there is some work that needs to be done to Oak Ridge Road and, um. And I'm wondering where it is, and I apologize, I haven't seen the new plan and where Oak Ridge Road is. But given that that is now a requirement, uh, what's the plan to get that done? And I would also note that I have seen a survey. Uh, an engineering survey of the road, something that wasn't available during the, the legal, the legal journey. And, um. Uh, during legal testimony, uh, Mr. Hunter. Uh, testified that he thought, uh, two hundred and sixty feet of the road. Did not meet fire access road standards in this new survey, which I think the county has, has now. Uh, that, uh, that length of road that requires. Uh, that is below standard is, uh, almost four thousand feet. So I'd like to hear your comments on that. And ask what the overall plan is for, uh, the gravel portion of Oak Ridge Road.
Thank you, Mr. Steve. Uh, we'll go back in the room. Does anybody in the room have comments? Um, for against or addition to the county's published six year road plan? Not seeing hands fly. We'll go back online. Does anybody else online have comments? Uh, for this public hearing on the six year road plan? I'm not seeing any. All right, there we go. We got the people back. Go ahead, Sherry. I'm assuming it's Sherry again.
Thank, okay, am I unmuted?
Yep.
Okay. Um. Uh, thank you for the opportunity again to comment. I, I had not seen this on the agenda. Cause I haven't been keeping up with things. Anyway, this brings me back, I, I guess it's not related because it wasn't supposed to be, but you know. With the, I didn't know we were discussing the six year road hall. I know that Oak Ridge Road has been on the six year road hall for some time now. But again, you know, with, uh. The corporation and everything that we've been through, at the corporation being under canvas, sorry. Um, and what we've been through with discussions of the, um. The fixing of Oak Ridge Road, I kind of want, uh, your guys' feedback, and I do appreciate what Commissioner Christopher said earlier. On in those hearings under canvas did agree to bring that road up to. Up to standard, I believe that's the titled twelve. Um, at their cost. So you know, again, you are the protectors of the people. That's what you've taken an oath to be. And, um, I'm hoping that all three of you will advocate. If there is a, you know, a cost to fixing Oak Ridge Road sooner than. Or more than like that gravel part, and you know, there will probably be a whole lot of, uh. Having to grade things out or whatever that entails, you know, like they had to up on, uh, Courtney Road. And it could be quite expensive as you know, Courtney Road, I think is eight million. We, nobody really knows. It was six, it was five, it's seven, eight, who knows, somewhere in there. But you know. I appreciate again. Commissioner Christopher, you are true to say if these corporations want to be pu- putting their stuff places. We'll, we'll keep them accountable for the cost and we can use the county budget to other roads. That maybe might serve our citizens and their safety first. And make the corporations pay for what they put in. So I guess that's what I have to say on the six year road plan. I know that Oak Ridge has been on there, but I think there's a lot to be discussed considering that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Um, so yep, that will be a question for me in a second. So I was just looking at the twelve year road plan. And I was looking at the spot with Oak Ridge that's still out on twenty twenty nine. And it did bring up a question, so I'm taking notes for myself. Uh, all right, thank you, Sherry. Anybody in the room or online? Have public comments for the six year road plan? Bonnie, go ahead. We're not hearing you, so you might need to unmute yourself, Bonnie. Which looks like you're unmuted, but it's not working. Yeah, we're not, we're not hearing anything, but I don't see your mic muted either. So I think you. Have a technical glitch on a button or something. Um. We'll give you a second and try to figure it out. If not, we will. Move on. The only thing I can think of is logging off and logging back in again. Um. Changing your audio settings or something so that we can. Get you because your audio is. Not working. So we'll give you a minute to log out and log back in, and when you do, raise your hand, unmute yourself, get our attention. Um, anybody else? In the room or online have public comment for the Board of Commissioners? Ms. Bonnie, we'll give you about, uh, five, 10 minutes to figure out audio. In the meantime, um. I will ask if the board has any clarifying questions of the statements from the public. Uh, or any questions of staff. Based on. Questions of the public. Hearing that.
Um, I guess that it was brought up that, that there's four thousand feet of Oak Ridge Road. Okay.
No, it's the same report.
You have to come to a microphone now, unfortunately.
I really don't want to get you in this thing because this has really doesn't have anything to do with the six year road plan.
Cause it's not mentioned on the six year.
But it is, I mean.
Well, it is, but I'll, I'll answer that because I work for you guys, so I'll answer your question. The, not the, not the people that measured the road. The people that actually translated their measure, anybody that's driven down Oak Ri- Oak Ridge knows it is not ten feet wide. That's what the report that was written says.
That it was ten feet wide?
Ten feet wide in spots. It is not ten feet wide. Again, I don't want to get into the flawed report. We've already gone through this. There's been many witnesses out there that have evaluated the road. Bottom line is this. I said it from day one. Under Canvas will fix the road to that twenty foot minimum standard on their own dime before they're, before we ever sign off. That they can open for business. That has been the ongoing thing from day one. That's the only thing I can do. Is make sure they bring the road up to standard. I don't get the sound they don't get to have their under campus there. That's not my call. My call is to make sure that they bring the road up to standard, and they will. Part of their deal is not only if they bring it up to standard, they also have to sign the road. So they have to present engineered plans, which we will review and approve. Then they'll go out and they'll build the road. They'll have one of our inspectors as if it was our road. The only difference is, is the county taxpayers won't be paying for it. They will. That's the biggest difference.
Uh, question I have on the. On our plan, the six year plan, Oak Ridge Road was at six years. And now it got pushed out another year, just like it's been pushed for the last decade. Um, I noticed you don't even have a dollar amount next to it for the chip seal. But anyway. It says, uh, point eight two miles of south. Um. Ridgeview Road to point six three miles of Post Glen Road. What portion is that?
That's the portion that everybody's talking about. Now that's on there. The reason that's on there and has zero amount is it's still considered a capital improvement from the county. Whether the county does it or a developer does it. In this instance, since we know it's there. We put it, and we know that now there's a commitment to do it. Stays on the six year, but it stays. If you notice, there is no dollar figure. And every other project has a dollar figure. What that typically means is, is, or what not typically, what that means is the county tax, the county has no intention. At this point in time to actually build the road. But a developer will. And so for us to recognize the actual construction of it, it should be on our plan if we know it's coming.
Right.
Even though we're not doing the work. That's why the doll, the zero dollar.
I'm glad you pointed out the zero dollar because I was going to clarify that part of it. Uh, to help clarify the whole situation.
So. Backing up in time, because I wasn't involved early in this. The difference between a local access road and a fire. What, what happened there?
Local access road is a row or is a county classification of a road.
Okay.
Fire access road can be used as a county act, a county road or can be used as. Um, a private road. Generally, it's a private road term. But our old, our standards that we presently use, that's why we're trying to upgrade our standards, don't really signify the difference between the two. So for us at the time to make sure they at least did the minimum, and that's what everybody else does. We couldn't go beyond that because we have no, you know, no jurisdiction we would lose in a battle. So at least we said, look, you've got to bring it up to the minimum, which is twenty feet. So that's why we use the fire access. If we would have tried to use ours, then we get into this whole thing about traffic engineering and everything. And any traffic engineer that they hire are going to say the level of service isn't going down, people. Let's be realistic. Yes, you're doubling the traffic. But the road can still handle, handle it once it's twenty feet. So if we had went after him and said, we want you to build a twenty four foot road, we could ended up with nothing. Uh, because have we ever made anybody else build a twenty four foot road? Not since I've been here. And I don't know anybody else that's done one. So that's why we went, fire access road is typically twenty feet. Or it is twenty feet, not typical. The new standards actually separate the difference between a public road and a private road. And that's the big push. Which we'll get back to.
Thank you.
Hello, am I?
Uh, hang, hang on, what's that?
Sounds like Bonnie.
Is that Bonnie from earlier?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go, go ahead with your testimony, ma'am.
Um, okay, first I would like to say I live on Oak Ridge Road. I've lived here for. For over forty years and, um. And I have read. The survey and the engineer report that was done for Oak Ridge Road. And I am appalled by Jeff Hunter's representation. Of that, the work that was done there. The date, Oak Ridge Road with a new rock hauling that's going on is more dangerous than it ever was. Every single time I leave my house or any of my neighbors leave their home, our lives are in danger. Oak Ridge Road isn't just less than twenty feet wide and. I am appalled that Jeff Hunter would say that in, any engineer that was hired, any surveyor that was hired would find. Um. Just, you know, find it inadequate. Um. That's appalling. It makes me. Feel that much more unsafe. Um. I. Jeff Hunter's testimony before the hearings examiner was false. Latently false. We have gone to. A huge degree and expense to show that it was false. And to allow him to represent our county like that and threaten our safety is just. Over the top.
Ma'am, I am gonna have to, I know, I know you're very emotional about this, but I'm gonna have to ask you to. Keep your comments relevant to the six year road plan that we're having the hearing on and not about the under canvas. Um. Hearings example testimony. So stick to the road.
Are increasing traffic on Oak Ridge Road. By ninety five units. Ninety five units. It. Has Clickitack County ever had that kind of impact on a rural road before? In one lump sum? Never. Okay? Um, I would like to say that I am fairly certain. That no insurance company that the county hires or could hire would possibly. Be held responsible for the kind of negligence that's going on here. When I lose my ability to walk or my neighbor does. Or someone gets killed on this road, which I predict will be in a very short time with the kind of oversight that's taking place by the county right now. You can guarantee that the county will be sued. And that all of the information that's done on the road so far will be made available. It's not just wit, that violations. To the road standards. Include line of sight, they include slopes. If you go off, there's no shoulders. If you go off, you can go down twelve feet in some areas. You know, okay, you can ignore what I say and you cannot hear this.
Uh, ma'am, thank you. We, we are limited to three minutes and your time is up. You're more than welcome to submit written comments. Uh, for the record, like I said, I, I understand you're very heated and very passionate on this issue. So I, I do want to give you some latitude on that one because, you know, this does definitely affect you. So. Uh, we definitely appreciate your comments. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Um, clarifying question, go.
Uh, so when we take public testimony, it's in favor or opposed to the six year road plan and, uh. Bonnie did not answer if she was in favor or opposed to the six year road plan. It sounds like she wants it to be safer. So is she asking that Oak Ridge be moved up the list? She might not be there, but.
Um, Bonnie, if you're still there, Commissioner Anderson has a clarifying question. Um, he couldn't tell if you were in favor of or opposed to the six year road plan. And he wants to know if you want the Oak Ridge Road moved up the list from twenty twenty nine. Um, I don't know. Is that the question you had, sir?
Sounds good enough.
Okay. Uh, I don't know if you still have audio to be able to answer the commissioner's question or not, or. What the question is for, but. Um, yes, it's usually for or against, but I like to use this opportunity for people that maybe don't have the road on the list.
Hello?
To, yes, go ahead.
Yes, um, someone muted me and I, uh. Yes, I'm favor of the secure road plan. I want to make sure that the county, before they allow under canvas. Com- makes the road safe and brings it up to standard. That's all. I don't. I do wish that under canvas paid for it over the county. I do not think. The citizens of the county should have to pay for that because. You know, it's not, it won't benefit the citizens of the county to have this done. And it's going to be very expensive, but I want it to be safe for everybody that travels it. Okay? No, I don't think it should be up because. Under Canvas is supposed to pay for it, not the county.
Right. I think it was a trick question, but, um, we'll go on. It sounds like he might have another one. Hang with us.
So the other question was, is you mentioned that there was dump truck traffic. Uh, are you talking about the same dump truck traffic that Mr. DeVell was? And wasn't that on a different, well, that was on Rattlesnake Road, not Oak Ridge Road?
It, they're going up Oak Ridge Road and they're going up several trucks a day. It, they're going up Oak Ridge Road and they're going up several trucks a day, like dozens, you know? They're sometimes dropping rocks that are, that are, um, three, four, six, eight inches hot, big, you know? Um, they're driving quickly. They're, uh, it's very, very unsafe.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because it was, it sounded like it's about the same road, so.
Yes, they go rattlesnakes first and they care about the dust they have to deal with down there. But then they go up Oak Ridge Road. So, you know, as far as safety goes, for people we would invite to this area who would be coming to a campground, it's a recipe for disaster and you really need to think about the county's liability. You really need to think about that because somebody, I'm not exaggerating. I know you think I'm exaggerating this. I suggest you come and drive the road. I suggest you ride this road when, on a busy day. Preferably in the morning, ten to twelve.
Another question. Um, so as I understand it, the six year road plan, everything in year six usually has no funding. It still needs design and engineering. And so that's kind of the aspirational of when we get done. That might take six years, it might take twenty six years.
Correct.
And that is what all year six has always been for is, is for the leftovers that the, that's the future down the road. After we somehow find the money for Snowden.
Right. Actually, I should have said that and apologize. Only thing that guaranteed, even if the road plan is adopted is the first.
Is next year.
Yes. Other than, and that's what I meant by when I said it's a, it's not a budget document. The annual is the budget document. It is a planning document that we are required, but yes, just the first year. So could they move around? They could if, if granting became available or other reasons became.
And sometimes they do move around and that's why to Commissioner Anderson's question, I do like to hear if I'm the chairman, other people's road concerns because that gives me a year or two, look at it, investigate it, maybe slap it on year six next year. Um, so it gives me a little heads up to what the citizens are out there, not just pro or against this plan that I made and take it, leave it, or shut up. That, that's not the way I want to act. Um, I want to hear what roads they have a problem with so I can actually do some research between now and the next year when we do it. Um, go ahead, sir.
Um, so if, um, we're in a position where, uh, the landfill two twenty five isn't available. Would there be any way to continue with the Bickleton Highway by making changes? Um, so that we can get that next year done, or would that just come off?
I mean, the board has the choice. The problem is, is I would recommend not, reason being is is because the other money matches grant dollars. And without the match for the grant dollars, then the grant dollars go away. So, you know, those grant dollars are pretty expen, are quite a bit. And if we lost those, so yeah, if the two twenty five went away, Bickleton Highway. I mean, there would still be some to do Bickleton Highway, but now it would become a four year project or longer. And I can't guarantee, uh, because to save money, you would probably end up with a year or two of gravel.
Well, I would.
Because grinding and chips and B S teen and back is, is quite a bit of a cost.
So I, I guess I will answer that in a clarifying way that could you still do Bickleton Highway? Absolutely. But it would become up to the priorities of this board on whether they didn't want to pave something that had grants associated with it and use that money towards Bickleton Highway. So you would, and we will have to make these decisions eventually, whether it's this board or the board ten years from now. Uh, we're going to have to pick priorities and currently we spend all our money on grant projects. Uh, cause we get more bang for our buck. Other counties don't have that option, so they have to actually use their funding for local access type roads. And I would argue that eventually we may have to too. So to say it doesn't get paved and that's because it can't be still a board policy decision. So we, we get to take the credit for or against whether that continues.
I, I was talking specifically about next year.
Right.
Was there some?
And I'm saying specifically next year, if this board ever cuts the landfill funds, that doesn't automatically. I mean, the Bickleton project goes away. It's still a policy decision by this board that gets to take the responsibility for whether the project goes away.
And I have a question too about Sunnyside Road. Driving factor for what happens there? Is it based off of population? Was it what?
Condition of the asphalt.
Okay.
Um, when we compete for grants and that's a state grant, they're highly competitive. And they look at certain criteria. And, you know, we want to make sure we get our share of the gas tax. That's pretty important to us. And Sunnyside asphalt is getting to the point where it's an ill state of repair. I mean, we're looking at grinding it and replacing it. Now, if we don't do it with grant funding, then I'm going to be coming to the board and saying, look, we're gonna, or you're gonna hear from constituents that live out there, once the road starts getting potholed and we don't want it to end up like Bickleton Highway, which eventually it would look at. The difference right now is there's much more traffic on Sunnyside than there is on Bickleton Highway.
Which is just weird. Um, that one, that one still shocks me that there's more traffic on Sunnyside.
Yeah, me too.
So, but you guys are the professionals that are in charge of those little rubber hoses that are all over my side of town right now, so. Maybe I have to drive across them a few more times a day.
Keeping an eye on.
I guess my next question, um, and this isn't mainly about next year, but it is looking at twenty twenty five and we have two hundred thousand road funds, um, for the Finn Ridge Road. Is that something that we could possibly push off a year and move that to where the, the landfill dollars are?
You could push again. Um, a lot of that stuff can be moved around. Like I've told you, it's the board's decision.
Already moved once.
It's, it's moved once. I always caution you, it gets, most of that stuff on there is on there for, or not most, all of it's on there for a reason. Some of it's nice to have, but a lot of it's the infrastructure is more now. We have con, the reason that's on there is we have concrete culverts that have failed, that are, that are breaking apart and we slapped in, correct me if I'm wrong here, Seth, we slapped in just a temporary culvert that we'll, that we worked with Fish and Wildlife to not put in a big pipe. This is this passage. And they said, okay, we'll give you a bye. We said, look, we gotta get it done. The road's collapsing. You know, because the pipe, literally the concrete pipe started failing, had a hole in it. And so Fish and Wildlife, okay, we'll give you, we'll let you slide this time, but you gotta come back and do this.
So they're making us go back and fix it accordingly and not letting us keep the current fix in place?
They should. They could have never let us do that.
Oh, I know. I was just hoping they would let us keep the current fix in.
No, it's a fish stream.
Can't have a piece of conduit.
Double check that that's a fish stream up through there.
That's, you were gonna have to make you come to a microphone too, so the general public can hear. That has been my argument for two years on Finn Ridge Road. We have time. We need to take the legal argument to Fish and Wildlife Ecology, whoever the hell we have, to tell me how the hell there is salmon on Finn Ridge Road. And in that it's a fish stream that I gotta pay this kind of money for a culvert. We have time to argue that. And I know they'll remove that listing in certain areas. It's worth a try in this one.
Yeah, it could be worth a try.
It could.
Currently, it's listed as just fish bearing, not necessarily salmon.
We've had a lot of, a lot of F type streams come to NP or Ns in that area. And I think that's one place that it probably seems like it would make sense.
No, and again, we, we can, but we can do that argument. I got no problem with that. Again, I look to the board though.
But, but if we do that, how much cheaper does that fix become?
It's cheaper, half price.
We still got some other work to do because the other culvert still needs to be replaced, but it would, it would, you'd cut it half. Again, I caution the board though, if we take up that argument and we lose, we're gonna have to do it immediately then. Cause they're gonna say, we put in the fish bear with knowing that that was not a permanent fix and they're gonna want a hard deadline. If we were to lose and they were to say, no, it's fish bearing.
Even on the west side.
I would argue. I, I will take that as.
You still have years to fix all. I mean, they've got, I mean, court cases and everything. You've got, you've got a decade to get them fixed.
You're, you're correct there. That's true. But once we take up the battle, then we get in their sights and then that's not, that's never a good thing if we lose.
You can't get fish recovery money for that.
Well, that's my other argument. If it's a fish bearing stream, we need to be asking for.
You would think, but again, it's just like.
You're not eligible?
Not there.
Then we're gonna let them buy land and.
If, if it was, the places we are eligible is more to the west side of the county. Not out there, because that's not.
It's fish bearing and you have to do it. Why are you not eligible?
There's different types of fish bearing. So right now, all the funding that's out there is, is towards salmon. Mostly the Puget Sound area where the case was brought forth. It's a recovery of Chinook species. And I hear it's just fish bearing. It's not necessarily salmon bearing streams that they're concerned with, so.
Yep. There's different priorities. Um, one of the top priorities in the county and I've always said, yeah, I don't care. You're never gonna give me enough money to do it. So we is the culvert that's on Snowden Road. That rattle, anything that's associated with white salmon gets top priority because they pulled the dam out.
Culvert on Snowden Road, right there at the.
So it's draining now.
Oh, Bates Road.
The Bates Road entrance, that huge fill.
We can go into that another time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're.
We gotta tell six.
We, 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 I was gonna say, we're just killing time for the six o'clock meeting. All right. So let's get back on, kind of wrangle this pony show back together again. Uh, any other clarifying, uh, questions from the board on public statements or staff? Not hearing any, so I will inquire one last time if there is any further public comment from anyone who has not had the opportunity to provide testimony. Now is your last available opportunity at this public hearing time. You can always come back at next public hearing time. If you haven't had a chance to speak. Raise your hand, unmute yourself, throw a shoe, wave a Snickers bar, whatever you want to get my attention. Hey. Um, any discussion by the board that we have not already currently had? Seeing hearing none. Um, so in conclusion, I will state for the record that this public hearing is now continued until six P M, October seventeenth, twenty twenty three at the Clicky Town County Services Building in Goldendale on the second floor in our meeting room, which is where we currently are. For anyone that hasn't had the opportunity to testify, um, can come back at six o'clock and we'll do her again. I want to thank staff and everybody online for your comments.
And you can just leave those up.
Yeah, I think instead.
Mister Chairman, we have before us the consent agenda with five items noting that we are pulling number six. My motion is to approve.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with five items. Uh, noting that number six has been pulled. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of such general with five items, say aye. Aye, aye, motion passes.
Uh, Mister Chairman, we have before us the approval of pay estimate number one and final for the Pioneer Center HVAC replacement project twenty twenty three to install three new HVAC split systems include, uh, all seasons heating and air conditioning was the lowest response of bidder with a bid of a hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and eighty six dollars and seventy five cents. Uh, I will note this project is included in the twenty twenty three capital improvement budget fund three oh three. My motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the, uh, passment number one and final to pioneers for the Pioneer Center HVAC replacements. Any discussion on the issue? Other than, boy, I'll be glad when we're done replacing air conditioners, which I think next year, but last year is the next year, but we'll probably have to start the cycle over again. Um, all right, my fun filled discussion. Any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of passment number one and final, um, for the Pioneer Center air conditioner, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the account to pay up a warrant in the amount of three hundred and seventy two thousand dollars, five hundred and forty and twenty cents, date ending October sixteenth, twenty twenty three.
I will second the motion.
Here, we have a motion in a second to pay the bills. Uh, any discussion or problems with the bills? Hearing none, all those in favor of pay the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
How would you like to deal with that?
We didn't have the parks on the agenda.
No, it's on there. It's under and finished, but it doesn't have a time.
Interesting.
Got it. Let me just pull that up. Okay.
I don't see parks. Oh, I see there. See a number on it, so. What was the Swisser project? Who was doing an update on that? No idea, just a continued discussion or something? Uh, okay. Uh, do we have Lori? Are you ready, Lori? She's early. We'll go early.
So I wasn't really sure what you wanted for an update, so. So we put together one and or not want to know or something in between, so we can plan better. Or next week.
Sure, it's gonna be great.
We're gonna knock it out of the park.
All right.
Yep, thank you.
So I guess I'll just start with all that we're doing. Um, as you probably know, last night we had our planning commission, public hearing on the solar prohibition. And, ooh, every chair in this room was taken, literally. That was, so it was very well attended. And, um, basically the planning commission made a recommendation to board the prohibition in that, that area within those certain townships to the board for their consideration. Of course, you'll need, um, the findings of facts, conclusions signed by the planning commission chairman along with the minutes and all, so. Working on that and we'll work with Alisa.
So is that the, sorry to interrupt, but is that the next forward? You prepare all that stuff, make the official recommendation from the planning commissioner to the board and then we move forward on our end once we get.
Right. So I'm assuming we'd schedule a public meeting to consider that recommendation.
Yeah, that was your question earlier is legally whether it's a public meeting or it's a public hearing or?
I know typically with planning commission things in the past, a little different than this one, but usually we come with a public as a public meeting and then you decide if you need more information, et cetera, and then decide.
I'll make sure.
If necessary, to schedule a public hearing.
Cause we have the option to summarily accept the findings.
Correct.
Without, without scheduling a public hearing to hold our own, if we so choose. If we were to make any changes or possible changes, then we would.
Then we'd have to go back on.
Or here.
Right. So you're waiting for Matt to submit the chairperson to submit his.
Uh, no, he's waiting for planning staff to finalize from, from their pages of notes we took last night.
And come up with some finding of facts to send over to him.
Okay, so we're working on that and coordinating with the planning commission to get those draft findings out to them for their review and then for Matt to sign.
Okay.
And, and you probably, we can maybe tentatively schedule a couple, few weeks out, or I, I'm not sure how busy your schedule is, but we'll.
I will drop everything I need to drop. To, but that.
Wow.
Behind me.
Okay.
Temporarily anyway.
Okay. So moving on, as you know, on November twentieth, we have our, uh, planning commission workshop on the critical areas update. And Dan with, um, the watershed group, our consultant will be here. And Dan with, um, the watershed group, our consultant will be here, will be here virtually. And will be kind of leading us through some of that information. Many of the planning commission members or a few of them are new. And weren't involved previously, so kind of get them up to speed and how to proceed.
And that's a workshop. Um, can we fix it so commissioners, so I can sit in for educational purposes?
What day is that, mother?
Um, November twentieth, so it's the third Monday of the month, um, right before Thanksgiving.
Is that Spokane?
No, Spokane is the week before.
Okay.
Perfect.
And.
Um. Sorry, I'm, I'm. Brain walling through my head that. Uh, if you want to go, you can go to whatever you want to go to. I'm not here to tell you any otherwise. Um, I would. Um, warn that there could be good reason to have separation because eventually that matter will come before this board. Am I correct?
Correct, okay.
So if that happens, you may have to accuse yourself from knowing too much about.
I can read.
Okay, so let's say, yeah, you, you get where I'm going with this.
No, I'm good.
And we can.
I want to keep your head healthy.
Plenty of information you could read without being there at the workshop.
It is, it is by being the legislative authority, it's our duty and job to do everything we can about it. Um, as long as you're just sitting there listening, I don't see that as in any problem, any way, shape or form. If you're, if you're advocating or talking or trying to change their minds or anything, that could be.
And I could probably just zoom. I'll just zoom.
I don't.
I, I would, yeah, I would say with that, I, I just would warn, don't take any kind of public active involvement. Wait for it to hit our desk before we do that.
Okay.
Uh, we'll have all the time in the world to take public active involvement, separate ideas, separate policy, separate, yep, that's a whole nother. Scenario. Um, with that, as long as you're not discussing or no commissioners are. More than one talking about county business, we can all attend by Zoom as long as we're able to say anything.
Perfect.
So there's no need to post anything as long as you're not talking.
And then moving on.
Cause I might actually do it too now.
Oh, wow. And I, and I need to thank Alisa for kind of the, the backup crash course in Zoom and. Yesterday, it all worked well and this morning we found the right cloud with our recording. So thank you to tech services for that. Yes.
Was it a white one or a black one? Cause there's both out there.
Um, I'm not sure what it was. I was just grateful we found the right cloud. But moving on, um, under canvas, I know you've heard a little bit about that and basically the Washington Court of Appeals made some decisions. I made contact with the prosecuting attorney's office since it's, um. In kind of more their ballpark and they're taking the lead on that. We do have a, a large document if you would like to read it. But, um, I'm sure more information will be forthcoming and from what I understand from the date of the decision, there's a thirty day appeal period. And stuff going on. So again, the prosecutors, Rebecca Cranston's probably the best one to, if you have specific questions. And then obviously the planning department, we're doing all sorts of planning and this is just kind of a status report. We have. Twenty-eight short plots in the works. They've been routed for comment and they're in various stages, getting closer to final. There are a couple of them getting much closer to final approval and will need a signature by a planning director or somebody. And we have twelve boundary line adjustments in the work, six accessory dwelling units. Um, one overlay zone that, um, the applicant's doing some public outreach and then. Probably soon thereafter will be ready to route the overlay. It's kind of a rezone, but it's actually applying an overlay zone on top. So.
Which one is it?
Um, James Dean.
That's what I thought. I, I have questions over that one.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna need to get a legal review because I'm not going to prison over it, so. On whether it constitutes spot zoning or not.
Okay, there, there is already an existing aggregate overlay adjacent to this. So.
It's adjacent, but it's not off.
Legal review would be wonderful. I don't want to go to jail, so.
Yeah, I, I just want legal review. If he says it's fine, I'm fine.
Okay. I have questions. Should we prepare something for the prosecutors or?
I was gonna talk to you offline to, to send something over to get a legal and whether you wanted to ask for it or. I would ask for it on my behalf and then we share it with you or however you want to do it. I don't care.
Um, why don't we talk sometime in the near future and figure out the path forward?
Okay.
And then Lori, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
I'll come see you too.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Jake, do you want to come sometime?
You see me all the time.
Okay.
I talk about it all in the air, so.
Oh.
Everybody has the ability to know what I'm talking about.
So going down and we have RV parks. We have one that has a preliminary approval just out, um. West of town and they're doing the construction. And then we have one pending application that should be coming in in the next probably. Two or three weeks or a month or so.
Is it a small one or a big one?
Um, that would be one in the Houston area with the Smiths, so it'd be large.
And the other question I had, do you have six accessory dwelling units? Do you know off the top of your head, this side of the county, that side of the county?
They're pretty much all over. They're popular, um, obviously more central and west. There's more population. But I don't know the exact locations of most of them. Um, conditional use permits. I have a couple of applications that have been submitted. They're revising some of their CIPA. Getting additional documentation on their actual application, so those two will be ready to route probably within a month or so. And then Denise Lee's working on a shorelines permit with the port district in the Benjen area. And they actually had a shorelines permit, but it expired from two thousand fifteen, so they have to go back through and re-permit it. Um, potentially the CIPA that was done in two thousand fifteen can be used since they're basically doing the exact same project, just. They didn't get it done. And then some other things that are going on, um, rock pits and mining, that seems to be a hot thing these days. Um, we have three possible upcoming conditional use permits, either two of them would amend existing permits and one would be brand new. And then we have the, um, overlay that we talked about a few minutes ago. Um, and these are some of the more boring day-to-day things we do. We're averaging three to five address applications a week. Um, building permits, we're just continually reviewing building permits and mobile home placement permits. Zoning determinations and simple zoning questions. We actually, the actual determinations, we don't get a lot, but. Majority of our everyday phone calls are people calling wanting to know zoning and what they can do with their property. And short-term rentals are very popular, at least talking about them and asking questions, probably get three to five inquiries a week.
Is that one, do you feel that one's coming from people who are following our discussions and are wanting information? Or are these just random people that are, have no idea we've been having discussions?
Pretty much random people and realtors wanting to know where we are in the process. And then public records requests, we probably average two to three a week and some are simple and some are, well, a lot more complicated. And that's kind of the day in the life or the week in the life of the planning department. So again, I wasn't sure what you wanted to know or.
No, this is good. Um, for me, it was. Your planning department's changed in the last week.
Yes.
And so we want to make sure we keep our, not our finger on you, but our, our, our feelers to the pulse. Of the, of the department and, and sense any kind of issues or see what's going on. I like these detailed reports. I mean, it lets me know what's happening before it blows up in a phone call in my ear. Um, so I think between those two things, I, it's fine. I don't, I don't propose any change.
Okay, well, and certainly if you have suggestions or whatever, we'd appreciate it. And of course, probably the million dollar question is, um, a CIPA responsible official or somebody to sign plots and stuff in the near future.
We.
Our planning director.
Or something, cause right now code says planning director.
Right.
Um, we have a legal request in. I do not believe it has been answered yet. Um, so you're waiting, we're waiting. Uh, Bluebird is waiting.
Right.
Um, we're all waiting on, uh, the answer to that legal question and potential wordage. So that we can move forward and actually change our code. Then we can do a CIPA official, so waiting on the prosecutor.
Okay. Did you have any questions for me or?
Um, I do not do either receiving.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome and I'm sure we'll see you all soon.
And thank you for taking on the extra workload. Um, and, and handling that meeting last night. Hopefully it was all. Happy-go-lucky people and no screaming matches.
No screaming, that was good. And things went well and we were done by eight, so that was two hours, but, but literally every chair. Yes, some people had to sit next to each other and maybe they, you know, didn't want to.
Thinking about that, whether it'd be big enough, because we did the one and we opened up the bottom room.
Right.
And did a zoom down there as an overflow and I, I got to wondering if that might have been a good option too late now, but.
It worked.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Um, yeah, next item is Switzer project at two forty, which it is two forty and I don't know what that's doing there unless there was. We talked about it before and unless somebody said throwback on the agenda to have more discussion, I don't.
And I think I got lost on that one. I don't know.
I believe Richard went to a meeting and he can probably give us an update.
Okay.
Uh, but it wasn't your idea to have it on the schedule, right? That's what I thought. Uh, yeah, I agree.
That was so long ago.
So, um. I have attended some meetings and, and some meetings that have occurred recently, uh, very last minute for me, uh, such as the one yesterday.
Uh, you are?
Richard Foster, staff Clickitack County, so, um. So to begin with, uh, right now with the Switzer project, uh, just to, just as a reminder, it's. Uh, uh, we're considered to be a co-lead on that. Uh, it's, it's gonna be us Benton County and ecology. For this is basically kind of like a big water reservoir, forty-four thousand acre feet. Um, I went through, uh, some folks with aspect, um, last weekend and this week, including this morning. Uh, talking about some of the progress that they're doing. Um, right now, we're in the middle of doing an amendment for ecology. We're looking at an additional two hundred thousand dollars to complete the E I S and everything like that, uh, which they're looking to hopefully have that completed, the E I S. Uh, at the end of next year. Um, and so, but we're, there's very rough draft on the, on the amendment that, that we're talking about with ecology. Um, like first stages with it. Um, some of the questions that had been asked in the past, which was how much time? And how much energy is, is staff devoting to the Switzer project as a co-lead? Um, and what we were able to take a look at it from, from past timesheets and everything was. Uh, it equated to about six thousand dollars per year between both Dave and at that time Kirsten. Uh, if that makes sense. So it was pretty minimal in regards to what we were doing or is what it looks like that, that we were charging towards.
Question I have is I, I thought I remember during the McClure Department of Ecology update that they were planning on wrapping this up this year. So now you're saying it's not planning on wrapping up this?
So the draft E I S is, is getting all wrapped up. But they're, they're still trying to work with, right now we're waiting on comments, so we're in the public comment period and we're specifically waiting. For the tribes to give us comment back.
Any idea how long this entire process is gonna go on?
Well, with the E I S, I mean, just E I S.
Just that, I understand that process.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
Are you trying to get a permit from ecology to actually come before the county? And get the county to give you dollars to build a dam in Benton County? That's the ideal ask eventually?
Uh, no, no, that, that, there's no way. So the, the overall, uh, ju- just to give some insight on what it's gonna do. So just the cost outlays of it is about from twenty twenty from the presentation was three hundred and twenty million dollars. That was twenty twenty dollars. And so the expected benefit is about twice that, two to three times that. That would be used for agricultural, residential, municipal uses and stuff like that during drought uses. But again, as far as what that, i- it would be something more akin to, I would suspect like so, the, for instance, our pump storage project. Uh, where it's gonna be some investor or some very big multinational company that.
Kind of the same thing that the P U D did exploring the pump storage idea. And then another company came in and bought out their rights type of thing to do the work.
Yeah, yeah, ba- basically more exploratory and, and, yeah, yeah, more exploratory in nature and then somebody else would come along and. And, and do the bad, like the middle end work and the backend work, but as far as like the front, the, the front portion of it, that's gonna be. Basically Benton County, Clickitack County and, and in college. So that's how it started anyways.
That helps explain part of it to me anyway.
But it's, I, I would say it's six thousand dollars for the potential benefits on this project. I'd say that's a pretty good. R O I on one, what it could do for, for, uh, our ag land out there on the east end.
Any other?
No.
Questions, comments, discussions on Swizzler? Anybody remember, is that why we had it on the agenda or what did we?
Can my seatmates have a direction you'd like to go? Do you think it's still good for us to be the fiscal sponsor and continue this process that we started so long ago? Based on how little in essence overhead it actually takes managing the grant.
Well, we're so far into it now and I think I heard specifically from Benton County, they did not, they don't have the expertise or the staff. So I think it's us. And it'd be a shame to. Waste everything we've done in the past, see where it goes. Most of the work's been done.
How do you feel, Commissioner?
They might did last night.
What's that?
That the projects in Benton County, the majority of it is gonna represent Benton County residents in Benton County should be taking the lead on projects in Benton County. And it doesn't change anything. But you don't, so we move forward the way it is.
I, I would say, um, you know, this is the office of Columbia River. This is one of the Keystone projects where office of Columbia River in, in Washington State. And yes, I agree with commissioners all our, we are, we are very far down this train track and. And derailing it now would, would be of a very big black eye to both the county and the office of Columbia River if we did not finish the, the E I S. Um, and so I have, I think, you know, it's, it's not a lot of work because aspects doing all the work, we're just the spa- co-sponsor. And I think, you know, when that, when we were originally talking about it, half of the benefits would probably be in Clickitack County, on Clickitack County ag lands. And so that's why it with, um, uh, Director McClure, we had. Uh, the depth in order to manage it rather than having Benton County managing it. We were also the reason that we were the lead because we were. The lead for Wyre thirty-one planet, planning processes, uh, not Benton County and so. And it, from my perspective, I think it still makes sense to finish it off and, and stay with us, whether or not that, that E I S just becomes shelf stock. For the next fifteen or twenty years now that we're having a huge issue with mine grapes, which that was kind of what this was gonna be designed and built for primarily. But if you're this, if you're ninety-eight percent of the way down, you might as well finish it off.
Well, I can't imagine that we didn't embark on this, knowing that we were gonna benefit our county some way.
Okay, sounds good. And, and just so all three county commissioners are tracking, just to kind of pivot on, on it. Uh, yesterday, Mylan Walling came in, uh. Uh, the, I know you got to zoom in by very last minute. This was very, very last minute for us, um, as far as, um, setting up the Google meets and everything like that. Uh, but the governor's staff, uh, John from Vancouver, as well as some staff from Senator Patty Murray's office and Ray Camel's office came by to visit. Uh, and they had a big staff meeting with Steve Goldendale, so the priority was, was Goldendale in that regard, so.
So that's how your last minute.
Yes, I, I think I found out, I think Thursday or Friday, and it was gonna be the, the, the very next Monday. So, and, and that, we had a, I guess, a list. I wasn't aware of the list of who was attending, who was not attending. So and and that we had a, I guess, a list, I wasn't aware of the list of who was attending, who was not attending. But I did attend, it was downstairs, um, anytime any anybody does.
Was it talking about housing or what was it talking about?
So they were talking mainly about the Golddale Airport.
Oh.
So.
Did they get fuel in it yet?
They do. They they do have a fuel tank on there, I don't know if it's set up or not, but I know.
Maybe they signed a contract.
Gallons, I wanna say, six thousand gallons.
I just didn't know when it was getting filled.
Yeah, I don't know that it's up and running yet is the kicker, so, yeah, if it was airport, okay.
Yeah, I thought it was a pretty fruitful meeting, uh, they they also talked about management, uh, crisis management teams, the fentanyl issues, the housing issues.
Oh, they talked.
They they, yeah, they they hit on a number of different topics, so. But. And then, and then I did have a meeting with, uh, Senator King, as well as Senator Mazbrucker. In regards to the airport down in Dallasport, and uh, that's very promising. We were told to apply for the full one point four million dollar budget shortfall. Uh, and that was through Representative Gina Mazbrucker, so, great news, just found that out this morning, so.
Great news would be an offer to pay it. But I say we can ask, I mean, we can always ask.
Well, we we were encouraged to ask for the full amount, because we originally were gonna ask for five hundred thousand, they said, go ahead and ask for all of it. So, and it sounds like she, both Senator King and Senator, uh, Representative Mazbrucker said that it sounded like a pretty promising project, so. Uh, that's gonna be a fast turnaround, so I'm gonna be applying for that, I think I have to have everything filled out by like December first for last year's. Uh, application process, because when the, it, they don't change very much year to year, but when the next one comes out, it's gonna be very short. Fuse on it, and they have a shortened, I think, next, uh, next budget cycle. For the state is 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 only like sixty days, typically is a hundred and twenty days, but we're in off year for the biennium, so.
Well, that's another one that we're pretty far down the pike on and well into it, and um, I would hate to see it go, it's a great project.
Yeah.
It's for a lot of different reasons.
Anything else?
Uh, I don't have anything.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks.
Do we wanna move into new business or you guys, uh? White Salmon Pool people still waiting on more people to show up, or do you wanna go early? Alright, let's move you forward, so you don't have to wait for our boring normal business.
It's new business, normal.
Well, it's true, it's new business, it's not normal. And then bring as many chairs forward as you need.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So for those of you on Zoom land, we're gonna move our agenda around a smidge. And move up our three o'clock under unfinished business with the White Salmon Parks. Uh, district upstate on the White Salmon Valley Pool Project, and I believe it sounds like they have a funding request. So we will just, uh, hear from them, please let us know who you are and let Zoom land know who you are and.
Alright, I'm Lily Von Mosh, I am Commissioner two of the White Salmon Valley Pool Metropolitan Park District.
Um, my name is Benjamin Priggs, I believe I'm Commissioner three of the White Salmon Valley. Pool Metropolitan Parkers and the President. Um, so, um, first off, I I'd like to take opportunity to thank. Excuse me, the county commissioners, um, for their support of the pool project. Um, the fifty thousand dollars in the two thousand twenty-three budget, um. In itself, it doesn't build a pool, but um. Um, that support and the sport pledges by our cities was really kind of a a really positive note, a positive focus. In our conversations with the Washington State, uh, representatives as we're looking towards state funding, so. I I wanted to point that out and 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 say thank you for that. Um, also, thank you for the opportunity for for talking to you today and kind of updating you on the progress of the White Salmon Pool. Um, so in this, in our time here, we're hoping to, uh, give a real brief summary of the project. Um, update the design, uh, give an update on the design and the cost estimates. Um, we wanna outline the district's plans as we move forward, and then also, we'd like to give our representatives. Um, from the city of White Salmon, city of Benjen and White Salmon Valley School District, an opportunity to to speak about the need of. For for a pool in Western Clickattack County. Um, and then also answer any questions and and get any comments from from you. Um, Lily, you wanna start off here?
So we decided to give you a a handout rather than provide you with a PowerPoint and talk at you. Um, so this is a a essentially a summary of a PowerPoint that we give when we do a broader presentation that summarizes the pool project history. Essentially from, uh. The beginning of the May part effort, the Mount Adams Park and Recreation District, to where we are today in in two thousand twenty-three, working towards the capital campaign to get the pool built. Um, it also, uh. Outlines the, uh, the support that we had from the community. When we went to the voters, we were able to pass the, uh, measure that created the district with sixty percent approval rate of the voters. And have continued to receive a lot of outpouring of support from the entire community, including people in our district, out of our district, Skamania County. Um, our state representatives and, uh, senators, as well as, um. Our representatives from Skamania County have also been supportive of the project, so. I can't read from there, I'm like, where's my glasses, so, um. If, I know we have new commissioners on the board, and so we wanted to give a little, uh, update on the construction. The capital campaign project, capital construction project we're working on, so we started in, um. Twenty twenty, beginning our design review, doing value engineering with our consultants to try and ensure that we're building. A pool project that will last another eighty years like our original White Salmon Pool did. And, uh, went through the entire process of, uh, design analysis, alternatives. Looking at different, bu- building materials to ensure we're building something that's gonna be long-lived and also economical. We managed to finish a a final design, which is a, uh, multi-use pool, it's eight lanes by twenty-five yards, uh, with a. A three thousand six hundred and seventy foot, uh, accessory building that'll have the mechanical, the changing rooms and office for staff and. Check-in and things like that. When we first got started, uh, our pool district went ahead and and secured a great spot with the assistance of the White Salmon Valley. School District, um, that is on school district property, it is on safe routes to schools. We have a fifty-year lease with the White Salmon Valley School District, and it's in a a space that works well for the school district as well. Um, tucked in the side, and we'll have some economies of scale with parking, shared parking services as well. Um, we've done all of the construction documentation, so all of the engineering is complete, all of the construction documentation is complete. And in your packet, there's some of the construction documentation schematics, we're essentially ready to build. Um, we have done all of our traffic and cultural studies, um, and we will be reviewing the process. Around those, especially the traffic studies, as there's been some revisions at the school district, to ensure that those are still up to date. Um, as part of the construction project, we've reached out to our consultants to do periodic reviews. Of what our cost estimates are, so when we started the project, um. And came through our construction design project, we were given a price of around five point two million dollars. That was in two thousand twenty-one, we all know that there's been quite a bit of, um, inflation, and there have been, uh. Various other impacts on the economy, and we reached out again for a cost estimate. Uh, in April of two thousand twenty-two, and there had been an increase at that point as well. We are looking at a revised cost estimate from our consultants again this fall in preparation for going to the state legislature. Uh, for the local community project grant, again, in preparation for the Recreation Conservation Organization Grant Process. And so we're expecting that there will probably be another cost increase. We we know, and we've heard from other people who speak up here about the cost increase of capital projects.
What grant are you asking for for the legislature?
We're gonna go for the legislative community project grant funding, but it's a, you know, appropriation essentially, so. Um, so in preparation for that, we're getting updated. Cost estimates from our consultants as well, so we can go in with the best possible estimate. And what you'll see on the bottom of the construction project update line item is essentially what we think we will be looking at coming into, uh. Uh, a quarter to twenty twenty-five construction date, assuming that we can bring our our funding strategies and goals to fruition at that timeline. Um, you also have a timeline documentation, um, both in the brief one pager and in your. Mini PowerPoint that outlines our proposed construction. Timeline.
Um, the next slide, um, is a schematic that shows the fundraising status of the project right now. Um, right now, we have right around thirty percent of, uh. Funds either, uh, pledged, um, donated, um, or, um. Or I I think this also includes levy monies that we will be.
So the local funds includes local, um, the the tax levy, it includes, uh, public and private donations. Um, like those from the cities and the county, it includes, um, uh, and pledges as well.
Um, and then, the next slide shows, um. Uh, I'm gonna call it the Plan A on, uh, funding sources, um, so, um. I'd like to point out, um, the RCO grant section, um. So, um, obviously, all sections are kind of been put pressure on because of the costs of increased costs, but. Um, uh, those RCO grants, um. Have have, will probably become more important, um, as with these cost increases, um. And it very much will kind of de- dictates our possible construction schedule just because of the. Drawn out timeline of the application process, and then all the way through the awards process. Um, and then I'd also like to point out the Washington, uh, local bonds, so we. Last year went through the applications process with the with the Treasurer's Department. Um, the the application was completely reviewed, um, we actually went through with the school district and made some revisions to our lease. To match some language that 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 the Treasurer's Office would have liked to see for the local bond program. Um, so we feel like we're really well situated in terms of taking advantage of that. And that bond would be serviced within it, within our current levy, um, we feel like we can afford around a hundred thousand dollars. Per year debt service, um, we're hoping, um, depending on interest rates, of course. Uh, between one million and one point seven million, um, through that funding source, so we feel like we're pretty well situated to take advantage of that when, when we're able to. Um, so the next shows, um, a very tentative fundraising strategy timeline. Um, and then if you, I just wanted to point out at the end there, the RCO grant funds award in June twenty twenty-five, so our construction. Schedule that we have in the next timeline is 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 very much based off that, um, if we were to. Um, somehow magically magically come up with three million dollars, um, and we could avoid that long process, it would. It'd move move the project forward much, much quicker, um.
There's also the newer RCO grant that we're gonna be going for, and that's an adjustment. If you've seen this strategy timeline before, we've moved it forward a little bit because of the RCO COAF grant, which I actually don't know exactly what that acronym is. But it is a a a new RCO grant that's starting this fall, uh, with applications in December and funding in March. So there's a potential that this will help us out with our funding strategy and timeline, so it's been included in this. As well as the other RCO grants that we'll be looking at, which are the, um. YF, youth athletics facilities, and, um, some other outdoor athletic facilities, uh, grants through the RCO, so. Those weigh heavily in our strategy.
Lily, you wanna talk, like, you've talked about this construction timeline a little bit, but.
Yeah, so, on both of the handouts that you have, there's some documentation about the construction timeline. Obviously, this is our scenario where we're able to fully fund the project with our our strategy timeline. Um, so our target is to be doing our permit and plan review in between January and April of two thousand twenty-five. And then going out to bid and award contracts in April to June of two thousand twenty-five, and then hopefully construction starting in July of two thousand twenty-five with the facility opening. At the, uh, July of two thousand twenty-six, that timeline is fully dependent on on fundraising. Um, so we have a a pretty hefty amount of of. The public support that has stepped forward, um, including the county and the cities and, uh, individual donors. Will also be looking at other granting sources, you know, private and public granting sources, obviously, anything that we can do to help move that construction timeline forward.
And then you wanna talk about ask?
Sure do, so. We were hoping that the county would consider, uh, matching the hundred and seventy-five dollar, hundred seventy-five thousand dollar pledge. That was made by the cities of White Salmon and Benjen, um, you've, you've already obviously set aside fifty thousand dollars for the Pool Park District. Um, in the two thousand twenty-three budget, we understand there may be some opportunities in the two thousand twenty-four budget as well, um, and. Given the fact that the. Pool Park District is really serving a regional, as a regional pool, it's serving obviously the district itself of, uh, you know. That is encompasses the cities of White Salmon, Benjen, Snowden, and Housam, it also serves beyond that Beezy Corners, Lyle, Trout Lake. Um, and obviously Underwood and Skamania County, so the entire regional reach of this is reaching about thirteen thousand people within that community area. So as a regional project, this is something that is going to be, um, an economic benefit. Through construction and job creation and job training for students who will be, um, lifeguards, it will be doing, uh. Water safety and. Recreation.
Absolutely.
Basically, you can look at the tangible economic dollar benefits that you can say, you know, we're gonna get, um. People paying to come here, but there's a lot of intangible economic benefits through health and water safety and many other things, right, Ben? Oh, I missed the second part of the ask, the second part of the ask, to become vocal advocates of the pool project to the Washington State Legislature and other prospective funding sources. So it means a lot to, uh, especially at the state level and other big granters that we are looking at this coalition, one of the reasons that. We brought these folks behind us is we can show that the cities of White Salmon and Benjen and the school district are behind this project. The county has shown that they're behind the project with your financial support, and that vocal support is really, really important as we go for, obviously, the state, local. Communities' project funding, as well as any other big grant projects.
RCO grants and otherwise, yeah. So maybe I'll invite our. Our local panel here to get up and give their perspective on them.
That local community projects, let's say appropriation, the same one that Richard was talking about for the airport.
Uh, I don't know.
Good question.
I I think that was an NCP request last year, but I'm not totally certain. Actually, I may have.
Something to search into, yeah. It seems like every time there's a money source, there's five different groups of us fighting over the same. Uh, because your your plan looks remarkably similar to something I'm putting together in Goldendale with the exact same. Granting applications, and so, yeah, and I'm sure we sure will be on the list again this year, so.
There was a. A Goldale, oh, I'm sorry, this is Goldale.
Why, why I think we have a new one in Dallasport to try to get the rest of our funding for the airport. It is gonna be, uh, yeah.
There's this little bit.
And there'll be five of us asking for it, and yeah.
Well, in our expectation, we're probably gonna, you know, probably visit all the same folks several times, you know, the Yakima Pool has, uh, has. Been funded, I believe, three times through the same process, and they're not yet built, so. We hope to visit you often or less often.
Hi, Commissioners.
Hello.
Meet again, but I'll introduce myself, uh, I'm Marla Keith, I'm the mayor for the city of White Salmon.
Uh, hello, my name is Rich Polkinghorn, and I'm the new superintendent in the White Salmon Valley School District.
And I think just not to take up too much time, because then I can give my seat over to our Vinge and counselor that's joining us as well, but. Um, as Ben mentioned, we certainly are here as a. But as Ben mentioned, we certainly are here as a show of support. And I think my mind is less around needing to sell you on the merits or value of this project. I think even just in the conversation mentioned, certainly pools are seen not only as a community amenity, but also a real, uh, practical life skill that we're able to make sure that our next generation is receiving. And so I think I also want to open it up for questions because I'm coming to the table from the mindset of being a partner on how we can help to make sure that this project is delivered for the west side of the county. And I can speak to how the city landed on our allocation. I know it was mentioned in the presentation given, and that was the result of a joint workshop that our city council had with the commissioners last year. And certainly, I'm sure for you guys, you're weighing a lot of the same considerations, which is what we had. How can we allocate any funding when our budget is already limited? And where we landed was doing a phased allocation across the next four years to meet that commitment that we have, uh, made with the pool district of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the city of White Salmon. And then, as they mentioned collectively, you know, the hope is that the city's contribution cumulatively totaling around a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars could hopefully be met in some way through county efforts. But I also don't want to lose sight of, I think, that importance of shared advocacy. So even if, you know, phasing that in over four years looks different depending on the county budget, I think what's clear in how we have been able to leverage our state's delegation to bring funds back into Clickatack County. There's somewhat of an imbalance. I think when you look at what's been funded in the last two bienniums, there is a significant portion of projects that have been secured and funded on the eastern or central side of that legislative district. We are aware of this, certainly not just as it relates to the pool, but as our struggle when we're trying to see other projects funded that need that combination of local and state level dollars. So this show today of, uh, representation across our agencies isn't just about the pool. We're trying to be more coordinated and, and consider you guys part of that too in terms of showing to our state delegation that there are projects of merit and projects that bring value across the whole district when they can be supported fairly across that district. So I think that that advocacy component that the commissioners are asking for too might not have a dollar sign, but eventually the return on that will be what cements and make sure that this project happens. So I would also just advocate for consideration on that front as well, that we can be more coordinated and sharing the same messages when we are interacting with our state representatives and senators. Because I think clearly there are other parts of their district that have done that extremely well, and they're receiving more of those dollars into that district.
Great. Thank you. And I, I will not speak to you all about, um, funding or legislative advocacy. I'm new to White Salmon Valley School District, uh, but not new to the community. I've lived there for twenty years. But I will tell you how a pool in our community will impact our education system and our students. And Commissioner Von Mosh already spoke about this, but prior, prior to my coming to White Salmon to work as superintendent, I was in Hood River, Oregon, and I worked there for fifteen years, where there is a pool in that community. And as a school district, we took advantage of the pool by offering swim lessons to students in kindergarten, second grade, fourth grade, sixth grade and eighth grade. And additionally, we're able to bring students from our high school down for, uh, PE classes. And particularly our students who are highly impacted with disabilities. Those students learn how to swim. They also learn about water safety. Uh, and you also heard too about the opportunity for the students in the, in the, in the White Salmon Valley School District or in that region of the county. Opportunity to, to learn a skill, being a lifeguard, and also learn how to be an instructor as a, a pool instructor. So those are the benefits I see for the, for pool in our community as it serves the, and it serves, as it serves the school district.
I feel like everybody said everything already. I'm from the city of Benjen. Miss Catherine Keewitt wasn't able to make it, so just I'm here to show my support. The city pledged, uh, thirty five thousand dollars of our ARPA funds to the pool back in February, I believe, to go towards construction costs. So we're just here hoping that, uh, the west end of the, just county can get a pool and meet some of the needs of our community members.
Thank you all for coming up, supporting us. Um, so I'll just, in a quick conclusion, so inflation is, and it'll continue to be, the greatest barrier keeping our constituents from swimming in the White Salmon Pool. The longer it takes for us to raise these, the funds to begin construction, the higher cost of the pool is going to be. Lily already mentioned that, um, this White Salmon Valley Pool will service thirteen thousand residents of Western Clickatack County and, uh, Eastern Skamania County. It'll provide recreation opportunities and water safety training for residents of all ages, abilities and income levels. So vocal and continued financial support from the Clickatack County Board of, Board of Commissioners would clearly position this project as a regional priority. And it would further strengthen our coalition of local advocates, increase the chances of securing funding at the state level. So we really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today, um, and we'd love to hear your questions and comments, um, from here on out. So thank you.
Thank you all. I guess I'll start. For the most part, you had me at hello. We all know that line. I have been a huge advocate since I've got on this board for parks. I fought hard in the twenty twenty three budget cycle to get that community park fund money, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars added into our budget and set up this fifty thousand dollars per commissioner district to keep that money fair across the board. Because this county has not spent a whole lot of money in parks in the last twenty years. It was a hard push to get that money in the budget last year, but it got it. This year was a much harder push. Uh, and it pretty much became over my dead body, will it come out? Kind of a scenario. In a, I'm happy to say that it did stay in. Going forward, I will continue to argue for the importance of that money being spent in our parks for our youth. And that is the pledge I will give. But that is the only pledge money-wise I can give you at this point. Is a continued fight to keep that money available. Will I personally support your project in the legislature? Yes, just as much as I support my project. But I won't pick one over the other. I can give you that promise. And the bolt like this. Because I do think they're all needed and they're all of value and we all need to collaborate. Those of us that are the same thinking of how parks are important need to not fight each other. We need to circle the wagons to recruit those that may not think parks are important. So with that, I can give you my pledge to that. I will open it up to anybody else with questions.
Oh, boy. Long time coming. I've heard about the pool forever before I was even here, so. And I am a lifetime advocate of pools and water safety and know what that can bring to the community. The, as a child, the pool was a big part of my life. So, um, we will do anything we can to support you and look at our budgets and see where we can go forward. And I agree with Mr. Christopher.
Yeah, as of right now, we, we have the hundred and fifty thousand in the budget. We did get some bad news this week and we may have to relook at where our budget's at. And so, um, we're gonna do everything we can to try to balance all the competing interests. There's, there's a lot of different interests out there, as we all know. The pool is important. You know, there's the advocacy at the state level, and we talked yesterday about the advocacy at the lower, at, at the local level. And there's currently a levy and, um, we may need to, you know, if, if one of these grants doesn't come through, we've got to have backup plans. And, and you'll always have my support on, at the local level advocating for, for that. And I think that's, uh, we'll see where the legislature goes in the next couple of years as budgets get tight everywhere. But I, I hope everything, all the stars align.
We'd love to visit with you, but we'd love to visit on a different subject.
That, I wanted to point out, um, in our conversation with Senator King a couple of weeks ago, he really queued in. Uh, he's, he said something on the fact that it's, it's extremely important to show that the local community has done everything they can to try to bring, bring, bring a pool then. And then beyond that, you know, it, it, um, it, it's kind of the state's, um, role to kind of step up and help. But, um, it really goes in a long way just to, to, to show that the county, the cities are doing what they can. So we really appreciate the, the pledge of support.
And to, um, collaborate a little bit on Commissioner Anderson's uh, statement of receiving bad news in the last, uh, little bit, you may not be aware. Republic Services, we get landfill tipping fees off the landfill. And Republic Services, uh, lost the Skedja County contract this summer. They lost the Spokane County contract a couple of weeks ago, and just last week, they lost the Mason County contract. So that's a big chunk of revenue we're not gonna have starting next year, even though we budgeted for part of it next year. So we do have to look at, um, reevaluate our next year's budget revenue forecast. So that's the, what was being implied there.
And, you know, just so the people online, every time you've come before us for any of your grant applications, we have always, you know, sent a letter of support in every, in every way, and we will, as long as I'm here, continue to do that.
Thank you. We really acknowledge the fact that you have been big supporters and we really do appreciate it.
And, and we will be reaching out for our LCP requests.
We will.
The RCO grants, application coming up and then the RCO grants coming next summer, essentially. So, yeah, thank you.
We know you have lots of requests for your time and attention, so we really appreciate it.
Yep. I appreciate the update. The blueprints and the maps and you guys have actually come a long way with just, uh.
We're ready to dig a hole.
Yeah.
And put a building next to it with some water in that. We just need the funding.
Well, that's funny. A bunch of my emails say there's a big hole there, and I was like, I didn't know they started digging a hole.
I saw that comment too, but I've been advised maybe not to respond. That there, there is no hole.
It's the cheaper alternative of the White Salmon Pool. We just dig a hole and let it fill up with rainwater.
My brother did offer to get me a shipping container, but I don't think that that adheres to like health and safety.
Yeah, I don't know if public pool codes will.
It doesn't mean.
Um, anything else from the board? No, no.
Thank you guys.
No.
No, she said no. She put a foot down. You, uh, you wanna come forward, sir?
You got money for a pool?
Let's all just go there. That would be fun.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Um, I, I just received an email from one of the two applicants for the, um, natural resources interviews we have scheduled, and they are unable to make that date or time. This month is a bad month for them. They're interested. They're just wondering if there's openness or willingness to schedule another time for that interview. And I think it's, if, if you are willing, I'll work with Lisa to find another time or some other times at work for you. Okay, thank you for that. Before we can post the, uh, planning director position with Prothman, I sent an email to all of you individually, uh, with some examples. They traditionally post opportunities and challenges in all of their postings as part of the bait when we go fishing, so that somebody looking for the job not only looks at the pay and the benefits, but what's, what challenges there are, what opportunities there are. I'm, I'm just not able to, to draft that. It's, I think I sent, um, Kiditas and San Juan County the most, two, the two most recent ones. And of course, it has to be Jermaine accustomed to, to Clickatack County. I just don't even know where to start, what to list. I think, I think we need something, because I think it's important. Are we doing a comp plan or not? Start and wonder or not? I mean, what, what is it that you would want this person to see be your priorities? For, um, and then they can match their skill set to that. There might be something they want to do, something they don't want to do. It just kind of helps, um.
Yeah, I liked the one example far more than I liked the other example, and it was on my list to take example number one and tweak and modify and give you my suggestions. But then life happened and got in the way of me being able to have that done for you this quickly.
Okay. And that's fine. He's just, it's no, it, it, for the amount of money we're gonna spend for this posting, not to include that in there, I think would, um, diminish, um, our chances of finding the type applicant you'd like to find. So it's worth waiting, uh, to, to get that. I, I don't anticipate, but I suspect there may be some differences between the three of you. That would be normal issues like planning or any other, um, major issue in front of a, a board of commissioners, of any board of commissioners. So once I get that, I can draft something that I think maybe meets everybody's expectation or, or not. So, um, whenever you can get this information to me, or should you want to get this information to me?
I will, uh.
I mean, it's worth waiting till next Tuesday if we have to.
I, I will do what I can to help you in your mission. Even if I just copy and paste and say, I don't like this, I do like this.
And these were just examples here, right? I thought some of them were pretty close to what I've.
I was gonna say, it isn't, I mean, the first one to me wasn't that far off, other than a couple of things didn't really add. It needed a couple other things added, so I think we might be, I mean, if you want to rewrite and reinvent the wheel, that's fine. If you just want to plagiarize, uh, to some degree.
I just don't think I'm qualified to, to address these.
So I, I, I'll, I'll I will put it on my workload.
And again, it's worth wait. It takes a week, it takes a week. We're in this for the long haul anyway, and I'd rather get our best shot at attracting.
If we're gonna have input on this, we need to get motivated on it. So I do think that we should each sit down and come up with our stuff and be ready for it next week.
I'll work on it this afternoon if we get done before six o'clock.
Thank you Commissioners. I appreciate it.
I'll work on mine in and out of conference in the next three days. I did hear you may not be going to that conference. Are you not going or?
No, I, I notified and canceled. I've got other issues. I got, I got issues that require me to be here, so. So thank you.
I was curious if they had a Zoom option to their, I didn't think so, because they like to be able to have open discussion. But I was looking at the agenda going, boy, that would be so nice to be able to share it with the folks across the street in case they wanted to tune in and listen and.
Doubt they want plaintiff attorneys listening in too, so.
Well, that's I said, so my guess is the answer is no, it's not Zoom, but.
I wish they would record it or something, so at least we could go back, but, but I.
That's just it. So it doesn't matter what I learn out of the meeting. I can't go across the street and tell another elected official they need to do it this way because of this. I mean, it's almost like they need to sit through it and learn, and that, that's kind of what I was.
I, I think the agenda is a, is a subject that we're already.
In the process.
Yeah, so, um, but anyway, anything you can bring back will be helpful, but thank you for allowing me not to go. Lisa, they said, Leanne said I couldn't take a car, so I.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when you look at the busy and full agenda of this conference, you start thinking the old whiskey and cigar conference that we used to go to. Was, uh, casino cash and facials and golf trips. That was the last one. I didn't go either, so. Okay. Uh, add-ons. Letter support for the Hood River White Salmon Bridge replacement. Which the letter's in there. Does anybody have any issues with that or want to bring up any issues? No.
Any issues?
Appointment of an alternate to the board. Appointment of an alternate to the board member for the risk board. And he ran away.
He got it. He got it.
Add on number two that I put on the agenda today, appointment of an alternate board member to the risk store.
That's why I walked by that.
I was gonna do it even if you weren't here. So yes, the prosecutor was named the alternate. He is so sent stepped down. We need to appoint a new alternate that not necessarily are you having much involvement? But if some reason I can't go, then somebody needs to go. So I guess I will open it for volunteers.
I will volunteer.
Okay, yeah, volunteer.
Nope.
He stalled long enough.
He was, he was very happy.
He was really busy.
When I took this board the first time, he probably said Rex.
No, it's just an.
That's that's whatever.
Should you should you have an opportunity to attend one of these conferences? They're they are very good. They they're very educational. They don't mess around. They.
Scariest strength.
Yeah, so they're really good, so.
Probably need the education.
So I will bring a forward a. The term, a list of, because we we list the. The P A's name and the claims administrator, the risk manager, all the board members, and we only have to do that if there's a change. So I'll I'll put a resolution together and submit it for consent agenda. That's okay.
And then by all means, if any of these. The alternate or even someone who anti alternate wants to go to somebody else's board meeting, because.
Sure.
The agenda is very interesting to them, that they think can be a learning experience. I find that we just have to notice it.
And two of the meetings next year are fair to close, Skamania and Pasco are two of the three, so they're.
What the topics of conversation are, those who knows.
And put me on the information list.
Yeah, I'll notify them. They'll add you to the to the group list. And then the fall meeting is typically training only. There's no no board meeting in the fall meeting. It's all training, so.
Not the board meeting, there wasn't.
I don't think so. I don't think so. They moved that just to spring and summer and then it's just training.
Follows the training one, yeah.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. We got that handled. Third item on the new business is airport board appointment.
Did you look at the? Application?
Yeah.
Questions?
Any thoughts? You good?
You're one up. There's not a lot of choices.
The thing I can say is, even though he wasn't board member, he's always sat in on the meetings. Kind of to the back room, but participated. Kept knowledgeable and up to date. Very interested in the airport. Success of the airport.
And I'm really happy that it's somebody who is a pilot, who has been spending their own time going to the meetings and volunteering and. And from everything I've heard is well thought of on on the airport.
And I know him personally, and I can say a man of integrity. Nice. All around.
Okay, how do you want to proceed? Do you want to proceed with a motion to appoint? And then have it in the agenda for consent agenda for next week with documents or?
I think all you need is consensus to bring it forward for the consent agenda next week.
Okay.
If there, and there is consensus.
Thank you. You didn't eat the breakfast your wife brought you.
I know, I'm still sitting on my desk. Didn't bring my breakfast bar that I brought myself either. That's all I see on my list and upstairs.
Yeah, I'm good.
Or anybody else.
Wasn't there something this morning you wanted to talk about, and you said we'll talk about it later?
I don't remember.
It was, but I don't remember what it was. What were we talking about?
Oh, no, it was White Salmon Pool. I know you had. Verbally said to us last year that you were your intention to put your fifty thousand. Pool money to White Salmon, but not give it to them until it's time to use it.
So I, but I can tell you, I had a.
I was curious if you had already designated your twenty twenty-four fifty thousand or part of it, or what your thinking was on that one.
So. My thought, my thought process was. The city of White Salmon, what they're doing is is they're gonna enter into an I G A with the pool district. That they're gonna keep the money in their coffers. And then when they have time, then they can show that they've got the money. So it's it's in a sense a pledge, but you don't have access to it until it's time to start building. And that's through an I G A. And so that was kind of my thought, that we would do kind of the same thing and set that money aside, rather than saying, you know. If you don't use it this year, it's gone. What we're doing is we're slow rolling it, just like the way the city is, so that when it comes time to construct in twenty twenty-five or whatever. Or as much as we can get is there. But that would involve starting an I G A with them.
Which I I'm fine with. I'm fine with just pledging it, but in the same regard. If it's pledged and we both get replaced next year, those commissioners and just do what they want with it.
So that would be.
They don't necessarily have to honor the wishes of the previous board.
Well, that would be why the I G A would be the instrument of of.
Kind of in perpetuity.
Honoring that that agreement.
Was it your, how much of this year's twenty twenty-four were you? I don't want to put it.
We might want to wait.
Yeah, it's up to the commissioner district. It's up to you.
Well, technically, it's it's up to all of us.
The way the way it was worded is by the commissioner.
But I think we're gonna be having some discussions.
Oh, so now we're gonna change the previous. Dying to have those discussions.
Well, we're gonna have to have discussions right now. I mean, with what you just put out to the public, we're going to. Those definitely have to have some very difficult conversations here real shortly.
Well, I understand. Well, I guess.
I think I think when staff comes forward with some things, we'll have those discussions. I think Finance Committee and Jan and some people are working on some things to bring forward to us. Then we'll have those discussions. No.
No, about the twenty twenty.
Correct.
Twenty twenty-four.
Budget of which that money is a piece of it.
I don't think we should talk about anything until we talk to them.
Which is why I said what I said to them.
And if we can shortcut.
Okay, I I I fully get it now.
My. If we can have a shorter day, if we have any longer discussions, if that's okay, my computer has quit. So I'm gonna go. Yep. So I'm gonna go, I can't get it to do anything. So I'm gonna go visit I T when we're through, and I need my computer. I've tried everything.
Was it giving that is it?
Nothing. Black screen, nothing. It won't do anything.
It's lighting up.
Yeah, that that's.
Maybe if your charge cable was actually plugged in and charging your.
It is. I tried that. I crawled under the desk during session and plugged it in for the world to see. And the green line's on the charger.
Interesting.
Yeah. I've had some other issues. The last week I've talked to them, and now it just refused. Shut off, and that was it. So whenever you think we're done, I'll go bang on I T store.
Waiting for anybody to say anything or make.
Well, usually whenever we stop, then the conversations want to start, like, so I'm just waiting a little while this.
I'm not doing it. It's not me.
I'm good.
I can't think of anything else that was in my mind.
Okay. Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to recess our meeting until six P M. For the public hearing continued open to further public comment regarding the public work six-year roads plan. I would also note for those that don't attend that that we will be meeting. Eight oh five A M on Thursday, October nineteenth for the K L C K radio, and we won't be in person. We'll all be calling it. And two or more commissioners will be present.
And I will second.
Okay, we have a motion second to recess till six P M tonight.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing not all is in favor of recess. Say aye.
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 Thank you very much.